All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. We've had a lot of events going on since our last meeting, a lot of open houses that have been rescheduled and have occurred, lots of meetings. We have a full schedule ahead of us, so we'll go ahead and get started with our student achievement data review. Dr. Boone?
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. In our continued rollout of information in terms of our student achievement, today the focus is on accreditation. You will recall that in our calendar of events, the state released the 2018 accreditation results on last Thursday, the 27th. You were provided that information in advance, and now today is our opportunity to have further discussion on the matters. I've asked Dr. Bailey, seems to be out of place.
Oh, she's coming.
Okay, I've asked Dr. Bailey to walk us through some of the data points as it relates to the accreditation and answer any questions you have. We also have reminders in here as it relates to what's different in the accountability system this year as in from previous years. Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and Dr. Gabriel, and members of the board. Certainly, over the last couple of months, we've provided information to you either in chart format, report, or graphs, or the SOL information and their accreditation using the new methodology and the old methodology. Last week, VDOE provided a press release of the new accreditation standards to promote continuous achievement of all schools, close achievement gaps, and expand accountability beyond overall performance of SOLs. And certainly, this helps to address equity among students. A significant change was recognizing academic growth of students making significant annual progress and meeting grade level expectations in English and math. Certainly, it's important to note, the new design is to help schools, divisions focus on resources where they are most needed. Just briefly, in summary, the old system versus the new system. Old system primarily focused on SOLs. New system has some new additional categories. The philosophy of the state accountability system certainly is very comprehensive. It's about continuous improvement, and it's about building on strengths and addressing achievement gaps. In the past, we've shared with you the three different categories: achievement of all students, achievement gaps with the seven subgroups, and the student engagement, which includes dropouts, chronic absenteeism, and graduation and completion index. And it is associated with the three different levels. Level one, meeting, level one in green, level two in yellow, and level three in red. We have the performance indicators, or the status, if you will, where schools can achieve accreditation, or be fully accredited, accredited with conditions, and accreditation denied. And I believe we did go over the concept of the green, yellow, red. Having red anywhere puts you into accredited with conditions or lower. So as we look at our overall performance, what I did was I adjusted this particular chart so that we commonly talk about accreditation for the upcoming year. But usually, when you do that, you have to keep in mind that it's based on the previous year's data. So sometimes you'll see 17, 18, sometimes you'll see 18, 19. But I adjusted this chart so that you can see that the accreditation status, 61% of schools for 2018, 19, is based on 2017, 18 data. So just want to make sure, pause, that's clear. So I decided to provide a summary for you on the accreditation over the years. Certainly, there's a lot of things that have impacted our school's ability to become fully accredited. There are a lot of things that can take place, such as change in prior leadership. We've had certainly a decline of our performance in our schools over the last five to nine years, so it's been kind of on a steady decline. When the change, when the standards change, it's important for the district to prepare for those changes in the standards, similar to what you heard from Ms. Gwen Collins and Rhonda White when they talked about the English and math and what we're doing there. So in prior years, our preparation probably wasn't enough, and so it had an impact on student performance. And you can primarily see that impact when you look at 2014, 15 compared to 2016, 17, where we went to six schools denied to 15. And there's also a way that schools can be, are able to reach the benchmark. Certainly, you can reach it within the current year, but you can also reach it by having a three-year average. And it's a rolling three-year average, so one year pops off and another year pops on. So that's kind of what happens, so that's why you see the deviation there. And certainly, new this year, we have a new methodology. However, the state has elected to define fully accreditation, or use that terminology the same way for all of the years that this particular accountability has been in place, all the way back to 1998, I believe.
Dr. Gabriel?
Are we here?
Yes, Ms. Campson?
Yes, I have a question. Back to the preceding chart. First, where's 14, 15? It's like year 14, and then it dropped, jumps to 16.
Did I incorrectly do that?
So was the first one actually probably?
Yeah.
That was probably supposed to be 14, 15?
14, 15, yeah.
Okay.
Based on 13, 14 data. Thank you.
All right. So my question is, when we look at year 15, 16, 17, 18, were those accreditation standards determined by pass rates, by the old method, the traditional method that we've used for about 20 years?
Well, you know, we have to define old method.
Okay.
Because one of the things that we're looking at, one of the changes certainly between last year and this year, is certainly the additional addition of growth, also the English language progress, as well as the dropping of history as part of the accreditation criteria. In prior years, history was a criteria. In prior years, history was a criteria for four, six, and seven as well, but those assessments have been removed. In prior years, fifth grade writing was included in elementary, and that's no longer there either. However, it still was, the state has still considered that a part of being fully accredited for that year. So while you see the progress for each year, the criteria for achieving that has changed. So knowing when the changes were made, when the standards were changed as well, also had an impact. Going way back when it was no longer five, eight, and end, of course, certainly then they added in three, four, and six and seven. So in response to Ms. Campson's question, certainly the criteria has changed each year for accreditation. So this chart really says that we have maintained what is required to meet that title for that year.
If we looked at the data from this year and put it back to the pass rate, which was the only requirement at the elementary level in all of these years, pass rate, starting with year 15 through last year, the only requirement was, if I'm mistaken, certainly correct me, but at that time, in all the years, we've used, we've used pass rate. And the only other thing we've ever used besides pass rate is graduation, on-time graduation at high school. Is that correct?
I think that you'll find there's been some variation of pass rate. The inclusion of recovery changed. Initially, it was at-
That was a long time ago.
Initially, it was at elementary, then it changed to middle school. Then also, the retesting changed, the ability to retest changed within the last two years. So if you would like for me to then keep that concept in mind of having similar standards, same standards, and then reevaluate the data, we can do that. But I would have to go back and reevaluate the data to make it the same for all the years, not just the last two years, just because of those changes. Because in prior years, because of how we have it displayed, when the change was made, maybe three years ago, for remediation, recovery, to be applied to middle school.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, I'm looking at both sections of the presentation, and I'm looking at the one that you're presenting here. They don't match what's on Board docs, so is there any other changes for what we're seeing here that we should be aware of?
Well, I did, for those that requested hard copies, I did swap theirs out, and my understanding was that you may not have needed that, but I do have a hard copy.
Yeah, I'm looking at Board docs, and I'm still not seeing the same thing, that's why I asked.
That's up there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we'll have to get that, because we did get a last-minute change.
Thank you.
There've been some updates from the state on some of the individual school information, and so I just found out really right before, an hour before this presentation. So we tried to update that, so you had that, so that's why.
Could I continue?
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
We had, the board asked to have the, because the state is saying to us, if I'm correct, that we can use either the traditional method to calculate accreditation, or we can use the new growth method, which is the new method that goes fully into effect next year. Is that correct?
Well, actually, the state has said to us that they will evaluate all schools using the new methodology.
But also using the old methodology, right?
Should a school not meet the criteria for all of the benchmarks to be fully accredited in the new methodology, that they will then go back and use the old methodology to see if they meet the benchmarks during the transition year? And so certainly, the message that we got from that is that they're moving to the new methodology. They've given us everything related to the new methodology. However, because it's a transition year, they're allowing a school to, a school to be evaluated on the old methodology. We had three schools that became fully accredited using the old methodology.
And my understanding from the data that I requested earlier was given, when I asked to have both methods, so I could see what they look like side by side, and so that we could get an idea of whether our programs are effective, which is what we're doing with this. The whole idea is to see, is what we're doing working for our children? That's the whole point, not to just look at a lot of numbers. And I wanted to know if what we were doing, I wanted to see a continuation, because it's, you know, we've been reminded, you can't compare apples to oranges.
Right.
And so when we go down this list, we're looking at the traditional method, which was pass rates. And then when we jump to the last bar, we're looking at the new method, which also includes other indicators besides. It includes the growth model and other indicators. So when we asked to do that, we had dropped four schools.
Well, I-
And we were down to 23 schools using the traditional method. So that if I'm looking at program, program evaluation, if I'm looking at the amount of growth that we have, certainly I want to continue to use the same type of rating to see that, at the same time that I'm celebrating the fact that we have a new accreditation system that gives us a fuller and fairer viewpoint of the schools. But I'm still concerned with being able to follow what's really happening, growth rate, which is determined by our pass rates. And so this doesn't reflect a continuation of using the same method, even if we had little changes along the way. This is a totally new accreditation system that the state is now offering to us.
Mandating is not an offer. It's truly a mandate in terms of, and they set the accreditation.
Point of honor, point of order. I thought I had the floor, and I'm asking, and I know that she, Dr. Boone was just trying to help out, but this keeps happening to me, is that when I'm, a presenter makes a presentation, and I'm asking for the present, presenter to answer my questions.
Dr. Boone, you were clarifying that it is mandated by the state, the accreditation method that is present before us. Okay. Dr. Bailey, you were getting ready to respond to Ms. Campson, correct?
Correct. The only thing I was going to add is basically, because the terminology has changed from pass rate to combined rate, the state is really saying to us, this is a new year, this is a new baseline. And so this is, we need to draw the line and say that this is a new baseline. Now we have combined rate, and from this point forward, that is what you will look at and use to determine whether you're improving in the identified areas that the state has outlined. Certainly, the schools have the detailed information to determine how they're, they are compared, how they are doing compared to prior years. And so they have the raw data for everything to be able to look at that and then compare it to their plans, which I think is very important, so that they can determine what they put in place is working. I realize that you prefer to look at it differently, and so I think that we're just trying to share what has been shared with us for the public in a way that they could understand. And so I could understand, we could draw the line, put it in a different color for this year's status, because it is combined rate. In prior years, the terminology that has been used is pass rate.
And that way, we would all be able to get an idea of whether during the past year we had growth or not.
Well, and so, you know, we, we might have to agree to differ on that, but yes, we could take a look at some things and to make things consistent across years to see actually where the growth has occurred. I mean, I think it would be better to then break it down by content area and look at stuff, and let's look at maybe the last 10 years so that we could see truly, has growth occurred? What has changed among the years? Because there are changes, I know those changes, Ms. Campson may know those changes, but I don't think you guys are aware of all the changes.
Right. Okay.
Agreed.
Madam Chair?
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. The, I guess the standard for the mandate to say that we're moving to the new system, does that come in like the superintendent's, the state superintendent's letter, or something that comes with it?
Yes, it does. It's in the superintendent's memos. They were distributed to districts throughout last year.
And then I'd had a follow-up question. In regards to our accountability plan as far as the board, how are we stacking up to our target as far as accreditation? Where are we? I know that the bottom line is a whole brand-new-
It's a reset.
It's a reset.
Yeah.
And then we have the last year, it's 61. What was the target, I guess, that we were supposed to be looking at for this year?
I'll have to go back and look on the school board's accountability plan to see what we may have set that number, unless someone remembers, but I will need to pull that document. We have a dashboard associated with that that has some numbers on there that indicates what the board agreed upon as movement.
I guess, Madam Chair, my whole question is, are we moving in the right direction based on the percentages and the numbers that we're looking at here, based on what we've set as a goal?
And I, based on a goal, I have to go back and look at that. Certainly, we want all of our schools to be fully accredited, and that's ultimately what we shoot for.
Okay.
Because you can't say, well, who I, who would I want and who would not be there?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
But are we showing improvement?
I think that, you know, we're showing some pockets of improvement, even though when you look at the numbers, they don't show it right away. But when you look at individual school progress, some of our schools have shown some good progress.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I finish up my question, Ben?
Okay, finish up.
Because I, the thing, my concern is that, as we all know, 92% of all the schools in the state are accredited under the new model. And we have, under the new model, 61% of our schools. And so it's not that I'm trying to beat anybody up here, but I'm concerned about the children. I'm concerned about the schools that, that our children are going through that are unaccredited in elementary, and then they go to an unaccredited middle school, and they finish at an unaccredited high school, and so they're spending their whole careers. And, and I'm concerned, and that's why I'm trying to get to program evaluation, which is one of the main things we use. When we're looking at these general numbers, district-wide, we're looking at program evaluation, we're not looking at individual children. So my concern, and I see what you're saying about reset. I certainly agree that we need to reset, but for this year, this transition year, I still want to see, did we have improvement? Because I want to know if the programs we're using are working. Because a 30-point gap between us and the state in accreditation is a serious point that tugs at my heart. So I just want to say that, that's why I'm trying to get to this. What, how did our programs stack up? Are they working? And if they're not, we need to revisit what we can do to make it better.
Thank you for giving that extra time.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Dr. Boone, any comments?
Okay. Dr. Bailey?
Moving on to this particular chart, I think that I've explained the purpose of showing you this information, and along with the reset, you know, we should probably have a solid line indicating that this is a new benchmark year, and it's a reset, and no schools are denied accreditation at this point. This is a summary of the information that you received? Okay. Oops. All right, so it looks like an edit didn't take place quite, or it did. But, so the way you read this is, we were trying to pattern ourselves after how the state shared their information for the state overall, so that you could see how our schools failed, fared among the different levels in the indicator. And so one would read this as 30 of our schools were at level one in English, three were at level two, and 11 were at level three. So certainly, ideally, we would want all of our schools to be at level one. Realistically, level one and level two. And so because we have some at level three, we still have some work to do. And that's part of our looking at what we have, how resources are planned, and so forth.
Madam Chair, just-
That different.
Want to reiterate what Mr. Clayton said. I think we need to pause for a moment.
Okay.
Because there is some disconnect. So what we're seeing on our presentation-
Right.
Has for English, 34 and 9. What's on the screen is 30.
Three.
Three and 11.
And 11.
So we need to get clear on which, which presentation is accurate, so that-
Right.
We can make sure that what you're describing and what we're viewing is the, is the same. So-
Right. I apologize.
Can you tell us which one is correct?
Right.
Run an extra copy of what you've given to us for the board members that-
Right. The one that's, that you see here is correct. We'll have to get a copy of the correct version and get it posted on Board docs as well.
Okay, so what's on Board docs is incorrect?
It probably is, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay.
Mine looks the same as that.
Just want to make sure. Thank you. Turn it out one more.
Yeah, switched gears.
She had to print out just before.
Yeah.
Oh, oh. So this one's correct. Do I have yours correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just, yeah. Yeah, and I apologize, we were trying to get it right.
It's okay. We understand.
It was fine, I just wanted to make sure, because we were seeing different things.
Yeah.
This is a work session.
Yeah.
It's a work session.
Yeah.
That's right.
Because I've preprinted it.
It's okay.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
As we move on, I'm not sure, okay, here we go. It was asked of us if, when we share the information by school, if we could provide the coloring associated with level one, two, and three. And so we tried to do that at this particular time. Certainly, you don't have all of the information, like all of the seven gap groups that make up the achievement gap area, and so, but we try to indicate it by level. Just a few particulars before we might entertain a question, is that we have also indicated if a school has achieved the level via a three-year average. So for instance, Fair Lawn, they're 66, according to the level, would be a yellow. However, they're highlighted, oops, I missed Campson.
Your mic.
You're hitting it. Yeah.
Uh-oh, now I'm going to trouble Brian again.
Sorry.
So basically, they're highlighted in, in green because they met that benchmark through a three-year average. And we also have tried to identify our paired schools by a double asterisk.
Okay.
So I think there's a question from this, Miss Basine?
Dr. Bailey, can you, as you, as you just stated, that the all gap groups aren't included here, but, so which gap groups are included?
Okay, I'm going to do this from memory, but certainly, we have the economically disadvantaged, our students with disabilities, our English language learners, our-
I'm sorry, I know what the gap groups are, but I mean, in the, in the table.
Data.
The English gap group, so is that for, for any?
It's for all seven groups.
For all seven, come on.
They're evaluated according to the level one, level two, level three.
Right.
And then based on the performance of all the subgroups, they get one overall rating.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Right. So I would interpret yellow for, let's say, Bayview. They may have an area that did not meet or exceed the benchmark, and so therefore, they are highlighted as yellow.
Okay, I understand. Let me ask a quick question. So are those also looked at as a three-year average, the, what the, the levels are?
I believe so. Even though we don't have all of that information for us to look at, but I believe so.
Will it be looked at as a three-year average going forward? Going forward, it will be, okay. Ms. Campson?
I think earlier, in an earlier session, we had a discussion, because I think Mrs. Smith also brought it up, about the gap groups and the fact that they're, we're getting combined score, which means that it's difficult for us to see exactly where our problem is. So maybe could we in the future have those gap groups broken out, you know, so that we can see what our black-white gap is, what our special needs, regular, our kids are? Because when they're all combined here, and we see a yellow or a red, it could be that the school's doing really well with some of the gap groups, because perhaps they've developed a, working with a program with their special needs children, that have really popped them up.
Mm-hmm.
But that isn't reflected, or that another school has a really big problem with that, so that we could see what gap group is causing a red, for example.
Okay. Miss Basine?
Oh, I was just going to clarify that the school-by-school data that we received previously does have that. So I just wanted to, when I asked that question, just wanted to be sure that I was understanding this table correctly. But we do have that information that-
Right, and I was aware of that, but I kind of, when we have the summaries, and it's all, we're looking at it right in front, because I don't bring all that with me, I have some of it in my data notebook, but just for future, that would be something that we could do.
So what we need to do then is, when we're done, is to come back to this page and look at it and see how we need to have it laid out, so it's a little bit-
Okay.
Better understandable.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
This may not be where we address this, but when I look at the results for like Southside and Chesterfield, it says to me that some type of action plan is needed to correct the results that we have here in these schools. So what I'm concerned about is, what is our way forward regarding these types of schools in order to at least bring them up, one step at a time, yellow, and then eventually, level one, green? So that, that's the type of output, if you will, or feedback I'd like to get from this type of information. I get it, now what is the plan?
Right, certainly, in- Right, certainly, in any of the areas that you may see in yellow or red, there is an expectation that, uh, you, the school will either revise their current plan or create a new plan, um, per that content, per that subgroup. Um, and then, those plans are then jointly reviewed with our executive directors. Ms. Chavis, would you like to add additional input to that?
Good afternoon. In addition to the revision of each school's improvement plan, what we did, uh, in preparation for this year, as we move forward, is that one area that we know that we have, um, had a decline in, or continue to not do as well as we hope, is the student with disability subgroup. And that is something that we've placed on each school's improvement plan this year to give special attention to that. And so, what we've also said, any area where they are showing red, that, that needs to be a part of their school improvement plan, that they've been working on now since they've received this data. Also, what I work with focus schools, that these particular schools, those that are in red, will get, uh, more hours of support and executive coaching from our scope, focus schools partners. As Ms. Collins and Ms. White shared with you the presentation the last time regarding, they've shared a lot of information regarding next steps in the areas of math and, uh, English. Uh, the executive directors have also included more, um, time in these particular schools, providing the, making sure the resources are used appropriately, which includes an asset map that was conducted to look at the resources above and beyond what the states provide. And then, from that point, making sure that the resources are aligned appropriately to the plan and to the needs of the school. So, that was done in the spring and the summer with schools. And that would be different from previous years.
So, let me piggyback on Ms. Smith's, uh, question, which I think was very valid. I, I think all of that information is very, uh, key for us as a board to understand. And layered on that is the fact that we have, um, we've, you know, put in place within the budget the, uh, extra stipends for teachers in some of those buildings. The professional development that you just described. Ms. Smith, would it be helpful, uh, because in hearing this conversation, uh, it sounds like this might be something that would be beneficial to the board, to have, um, a sort of a one-pager as to what that plan is for that school, summarizing those details?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
And it would encompass the, the professional development, the teachers, of, um, what you are doing in order to make those improvements to the level yellow, to the level green? Okay. Great. Ms. Basine?
Uh, you.
Okay.
I thought we received those, we would get the updates from the chief academic officer on the correction plan, uh, corrective action plans.
We do get that once a month. Um, I'll have to look back and see if that maybe can be simplified. Uh, I know it does go school by school.
It does. Each of these schools, and it's also done by essential actions. So, for each of the four essential actions.
Right.
We include tasks and strategies and things that were done the previous month.
We already receive that.
So, you should have, if not, you will receive the work from Sep-, well, you get work from September that was done particularly to these schools. That's part of what we have to also report to the state.
Well, I don't want to add another layer to what's already been done.
We are, we already received those. Madam Chair, could I ask a question? So, in your review, what do you, how can we support, uh, moving these schools forward?
From my perspective, it would be, um, continuing to, as you're developing your board's accountability plan, that your, your steps are in support of what the schools are also trying to do. So, we will continue to provide updated data to you along the way. And as we're updating the work and providing the work that we're doing at the schools, there may be, uh, opportunities for, um, changes. One that's coming forward that we're going to recommend is about homework, and how we look at that. So, that would be a policy change. As we get into the budget cycle, there will be more recommendations, perhaps, as far as, again, realigning our resources and make sure they're appropriately placed to support the work of the schools.
I can wait till the end.
Okay. I promise you, we're close to the end.
Okay.
Um, certainly, as you go through the different slides, it's relatively the same. I think that as you look a little closer to this, you may have more specific questions, that you may would like to ask us, either in a two-by-two format, or, um, via email that we can respond to. But you can see that we've tried to include all of the information that you need to, so that you could look at it at a glance, not really get way into the details, but to see it at a glance, to see, okay, what's going on here? So, as we move on into the Every Student Succeeds Act, and we call it for short, ESSA, we have two types of categories in which some of our schools could be placed in. In the comprehensive support and improvement category, um, that criteria is highlighted there for you. The state has not released that information at this time. And I believe I shared the information with you via email as to, um, they're waiting on approval, uh, from their amendment from the federal government. And so, once that is approved, then they will share with us, then, um, the next steps to move forward. But, um, the comprehensive support is only related to our Title I schools. Our targeted school support and improvement category is for any school. And they primarily look at, um, the subgroups. So, we shared some information to you last time about this. And these are the indicators that they look at. Certainly, academic indicators carry the heavier weight. And then, they'll look at chronic absenteeism and school accreditation rating, should there be a tie for several schools being on the same level.
Just a quick question. What's the cut for chronic absenteeism that would, that we would not want to go over?
I don't know it off the top of my head.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just Because I look at some of these, and they're higher.
Fifteen percent.
Is that it?
Chronic absenteeism.
I mean, I would think the high school
Might be fifteen percent.
They're supposed to get, try to get down to fifteen percent.
Okay, so, that's a goal, would, would, above whatever that cut score actually is, would that be, would that by itself keep a school from being accredited, or would, it goes into the, the tiers?
It, it could be an area if it's
Was it red, even if they were all greens and they had a red there, it would keep, okay, so that is important. Thank you.
And so, this pretty much concludes this presentation. Certainly, mostly FYI about our accreditation status and what's going on there.
Ms. Martin?
I just want to, um, quickly be clear on what's the next step. So, we talked about, um, looking at our current, um, accreditation plan and what our goals were for this year, which the whole plan needs to be revised. And then, setting goals for next year by also, um, looking at the correct, you know, receiving, reviewing the corrective action plans and, um, and realigning our resources in our accreditation plan. So, um, am I correct in that assumption? And is there anything that I'm leaving out, and what would the timeframe be on, on doing that? Or getting, starting on that path?
Dr. Boone? Thank you.
Um, as Ms. Chavis indicated, that work has been underway. So, we have already, schools have already started looking at the data. They have already started making revisions to their, um, school improvement plans. They've looked at what their system of support will be. We've implemented, um, the actions related to budgetary issues, such as the difficult-to-staff school stipend with the goal of hoping that will create stability within the staffing of schools. The behavioral specialists are being placed now within schools. Again, looking at what are the, the, in, in that whole child model, what are the things that are also impacting the student's ability to be successful in the core academics? And so, that work is underway also. Additionally, what you heard at the last meeting, the, the work with the literacy model, the work with the mathematics efforts, all of that is underway. That was the professional development that teachers participated in in August. That is the professional development going forward. The, um, literacy guides have been placed in the hands of all of our teachers that, that work with the literacy piece. So, those pieces are well underway. Once the state identifies those schools that will fall under ESSA requirements, then they too will have some, um, training and reporting requirements that we will come back and share with the board also.
I'm thinking perhaps a mid-year check, um, on what we've put in with the professional development, with the systems that we've put in place would probably be a, a good thought. Dr. Boone, uh, your thoughts on that? Okay. Uh, Ms. Hampton?
Dr. Boone, um, as we look at the schools that are red and have tier-three in reading and math, are we looking at the, um, possibility, as we start our new budget process, which I believe will start pretty soon, of giving them extra, uh, staffing and instructional support? Kind of to booth, to give them more people there to provide one-on-one and different interventions, so that we can start kind of muscling up their instructional support, because, kind of target them, since, if they're showing tier-three reds in reading and math?
Actually, most of those schools already have additional supports that were put in place this year. A couple of schools have addition, you know, the district funded, um, building, uh, behavior specialists. Some schools got additional, got an additional one through, um, Title I. We've also, even as we looked at, um, managing and, um, dealing with our class size, September thirtieth is our, our enrollment date. And because we participated in the kindergarten through third grade class size, uh, reduction model, we have to make sure that no classes in, in elementary school exceed a certain number. So, we also then applied the board's equity lens with, as it relates to, um, staffing, and did not remove staff in, at several of those schools that, who's, um, enrollment would have warranted losing a teacher. But again, because we had a licensed person there, and we were trying to deal with the continuity. So, those are the, the types of positions that are already i- in place. And when we give you the, the summary of what we've done, we can certainly provide where you see the, the additional staffing. Our one challenge that we have, because the district, um, made nearly all of our elementary schools Title I schools, anything that we do, we run into that issue of comparability, because, you know, it's just difficult. So, we, we navigate, but we've been working through, uh, making sure that many of these schools already have additional resources.
So, for the future, as we go into the budget process, are we looking at the possibility of reviewing the, um, the, the, um, when we distributed, um, Title I to so many schools, when it went to the middle schools and to most of the elementary schools, it really did dilute the money?
Yes.
And so, are we looking at revisit, perhaps revisiting that? Because we have some chronic schools that, that we're all, all of us are very worried about, to make sure that they get even more resources, that it looks like they could need, they need more help. They're all able to be accredited. They've all been accredited before. I mean, is that just something we can kind of keep on the plate as, as we move forward with the bu- budget process? And maybe taking a fresh eye look at the way Title I is being distributed now?
The process of exiting Title I status is a lot more complicated than, than entering. I think I used the example earlier, uh, this year, that when we found that Bogotá fell within that seventy-five percent range, uh, free and reduced lunch eligibility, what would it have cost us to, to kick them out of Title I, out of federal sanctions under that model? And we would have had to put in about three hundred and forty thousand dollars that we just didn't have in the local operating budget. So, the exit process is, is, is different from what it took to declare, that created that dilution of funds.
So, it sounds like we're pretty much, don't have any options about revisiting how we do the Title I money?
We have, we continue to revisit it several times a year and talk about what are our options around that. But right now, absent some infusion of cash, it's going to be difficult for us to, to modify those percentages that we've used to, for the eligibility. That was a local determination to lower the threshold, and that's where we are.
All right, thank you. Ms. Basine?
I was wondering if you can speak to, um, I have initially some questions about the data, and then I have a comment, uh, that I want to make. First, you know, how does the dropout rate correlate with the overage for grade? I mean, I don't want us to leave sight of that and how that might be impacting our, um, achievement and accreditation data.
It may have a, a, a more significant impact than what we realize.
Yeah.
As students move throughout the high school years, um, promotion is based on achieving a certain criteria. And, um, certainly, if you're overage for grade, um, you may have a, a different impression of not moving forward. And so, it could have a bigger impact than we realize.
Okay, and the second part of that, so you mentioned promotion. Are there, um, thoughts, and, and this may be something you need to go back and think about, and you, Dr. Chavis, about whether we need to consider anything regarding our promotion policies? And I know I recently read some research on retention at the third grade can actually be beneficial if they're not reading on grade level, and it does impact, um, retention later on in high school. So, I don't know, you know, if there's more research out there on that, and what impact that might have if we were to look at our data that way, and could that lead to, uh, positive outcomes in the future?
I'll defer to Ms. Chavis.
We actually looked at our promotion policy last school year. We had a draft, actual final copy that we thought was, we would be able to put in place in Sep-, this, uh, beginning of the school year. However, because of some of the changes at this, at the federal level and state with attendance, uh, at the high school level in particular, most recently, that, uh, Mr. Coleman has decided we need to revisit again to make sure that what we had in place, um, will definitely work as far as being in line and what the requirements are at the state and federal level. So, we have a draft that's ready. It's just, we need to revisit again before we roll out.
Okay.
And it's actually been presented to the district leadership team for feedback and the superintendent.
Okay. Right, and just a, real quick, a comment. You know, I think a lot of what we're discussing and the questions that are being asked are really rooted in our accountability plan, that, you know, I'd really like for us, that should have been on our agenda yesterday. And I just, I can't reiterate or enforce enough that that needs to be top priority.
We agree.
Because we're moving along in
We agree. It is.
It is.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, just a comment, um, like you said about the attendance or absenteeism. The data says something, because you look at Jacobs, Monroe, St. Helena, Bowling, and then the STEM Academy. And one would, would expect that attendance has some impact on sex performance. But STEM academies, absenteeism is only three percent. So, it's like there's something else going on. To me, it says, something else is going on in here that's the root cause of what we're seeing. And, and I'd like to be able to, and I know you said we have a corrective action plan, but I'd like to be able to know what's going on in there.
Go ahead, Dr. Boone, yes.
Thank you.
And the others as well, but their, their results are the same as others that have huge absentee problems. So, something else is going on in this one. For, for the schools that you've identified, they are actually in their second year of intensive supports in turning around their work. A lot of changes have occurred at those schools with the goal of improving these outcomes. And so, we think now, staffing was a big thing. It's not the only thing. But you know, I, I shared last week when I was part of a state panel over at William &amp; Mary, presenting on the, um, the teacher shortage, preparing for that, uh, summit that comes up later this month. And one of the things I talked about focused on the schools that had had, um, long-term subs and not had contracted teachers. And we could have students that have gone through third, fourth, and fifth grade and not have had a contracted teacher. And that's why the impetus that we've placed on the compensation study, the, the working conditions, as well as the retention, um, difficult-to-staff school stipend, was so important for us to be able to get stability there. And the majority of those classes this year are filled. And so, we're in a much different place in terms of success. And so we're in a much different place in terms of success. Long-term subs have been part of the professional development to support the core content. But again, that was not their field of expertise and, and everything that they were doing. So.
Okay. Is it a quick comment?
It's a, it's a quick comment, but I think ties into, you know, your, your observation is on point and there is something in common with all of them and we see it year after year. And while our in-school indicator that we can control is teacher quality, our external indicator is poverty. And so that is something that as we're engaging in educational planning, our previous board had been committed to a goal of increasing socioeconomic diversity of our schools. And I'd like to see us, we haven't talked about goals, but I would like to see this board continue our commitment to that goal. Because I think that that is a key indicator that if we don't address it, it's going to be a long time to see change there.
Okay. I, I have a final question. It's in regards to the graduation rates. Dr. Boone, we still have a graduation coach in every one of our high schools?
Yes.
Okay. And do we still have attendance technicians in the schools, in the high schools?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead.
Madam Chair. Do I have?
Sorry, sorry about that. Go ahead.
So I'd just like to reinforce the comments that have been made around the accountability plan. As you know, it, you know, it's something that evolved over three years at least that we worked on. And I heard loud and clear about the commitment that, that we're in support of giving that attention. I'd like to make a recommendation that I made previously that we truly dedicate a work session, a full work session, to reviewing that accountability plan and what's in it and the schedule that we laid out and how, how all this data builds upon the other so that this board can first make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what has occurred. And then this board can make an assessment with the superintendent about what the board feels we should continue or what the board feels we should modify. And then from that, moving forward, we would then all be on the same page and be able to map out, as we had done in previous years, how these presentations will build. Because as I'm listening to the questions, and I think they're all great questions and great points, I feel, I remember when we went through this before, that part of the challenge is we look at data such as this at a school-wide level, and then we want to go into the disaggregated level, but that's not what the primary focus would be for this particular meeting. But if we knew, if Ms. Campson knew, if Ms. Smith knew, if I knew, if others knew, that let's say in November, we're going to do the disaggregated piece of it, then we could prepare our questions and get questions to them to, to do that. So I, I just want to reiterate that piece. And then something else I just want to talk about in terms of how the work session works in general, so at least how it has in the past. So as Dr. Bailey is presenting, as other members of the administration are presenting, they're all representative of the administration with Dr. Boone as the CEO and the superintendent. And so there will be times where Dr. Boone, as the one that we hold accountable, may offer additional input and comment on the presentations that are being made. So I don't want there to be this impression that somehow there's a, that Dr. Boone can't provide feedback or that members who are presenting can't provide feedback. They're all representative of the administration, providing input to us and allow us as a board in our work session to then have the type of dialogue that we're, that we're having. So I just also wanted to state that as well.
Yeah, thank you. And it's to comment on your first point. Dr. Boone and I were discussing very recently about having a dedicated retreat to the accountability plan, and we were looking at November for that. And as we go into agenda planning tomorrow, we're going to probably shoot some dates out to everybody because, you know, Ms. Smith had brought up, you know, having focus on one topic. And I think that the accountability plan, as we did our training last week as well, showed that how much we have to work on it and sing from the same sheet of music, so to speak. So that is very much a priority for us as a board and, and planning. So we are on top of that.
Thank you for that and just like to be, you know, make sure we're all on that same page. And then I just would also just offer for any members that have not had the opportunity, there may be some webinars that are also available. In previous boards, we went through Data Made Me Do It training and talked about data and so forth. I think it had a lot of value. So whether we do it individually or at various conferences, if you see presentations around that, I think it's also very helpful because we also try to do that as a team so that we could be on the same page as far as that as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can, and I'm glad that you made that mention, Mr. Jordan. As you all know, I went to CUBE conference last week and I have several items that I'll be shooting out in emails today, particularly around ESSA. I've decided I would kind of follow and some of the information here that I'll be sharing that I think will be very helpful as we start talking about ESSA, we start talking about equity within our public schools and funding and so forth. So I definitely want to share that. I do, I'm looking at a timeline here and I just wanted to ask a question though quickly. Are we using this particular school year right now, 18, 19, as kind of a diagnosis planning period based on the data that we're getting? And then we kind of, we have to present something to the federal government in regards to improvement plans? And then we?
With respect to what you see today, certainly plans have already been created or have been worked on in schools or acting on those. They're working with their executive directors on those and refining of those. The additional status of schools that we're waiting on is the ESSA status, if you will, and that requires additional effort. Ms. Javis?
Based on the designations from ESSA, there may be additional requirements that we'll have to put in place. Once we see those schools and get that information, we'll then work with the schools. There's some training that's coming up that we've been, once we get the final information, there's training that will happen that we will attend with the schools to do that planning. So this may be a planning year for implementation for next year.
And?
May I speak?
Of course.
Yes, Dr. Boone, yes.
Ms. Martin and I were both in the same meeting today with the state superintendent, Dr. James Lane. And one of the things that he was sharing in that meeting is that 2018, 19 is what they are using based on the 17, 18 data as the baseline. And so to, to the other part of your question, this is, the data based on 17, 18 represent our baseline year.
And so just to follow up with that, Madam Chair, as we're preparing for, I guess, the real deep dive work session that we'll do in building out the accountability plan, I know that I brought it up in our, in our two-by-twos and looking at this. I use the term that this year is kind of almost like a by-year. Like you said, it's building a baseline for where we're going to move forward. But there are some critical, I guess, areas, absenteeism and some other things that we identified that going, starting July 1, and then when we start seeing our accreditation, that I don't want to see kind of creep up on us. And I know that there's some work, and Dr. Boone, you've expressed that, you know, the district is really working towards that. But I guess when we get into our session, our work sessions, and we're looking at the accountability plan, keeping that in mind, that we really want to keep that thermometer, you know, as we're moving closer to it so that we aren't surprised and that we're doing everything we possibly can. Not saying that we're not, but just kind of putting it out there that as we build the accountability plan.
Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you very much, Jeffery.
Thank you. Mr. Fuddy could join me here at the table. I think we're doing the district climate survey.
Yes.
And so while he's coming up, there are some reports that we will get to you. I think the, the latest version of the accountability plan for the board, also the dashboard that I'll accompany that.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Division Climate Survey. Dr. Boone?
As you've received and as has been the practice of Norfolk Public Schools annually since probably the early 2000s, we have been conducting climate surveys with parents, teachers, and students with the goal of addressing, getting to some of those things about what makes schools work well and what are some areas that we continue to focus on. This year is the second year that we've used an external partner, K-12 Insight, to support us with the parent surveys. And so today you will also hear their summary of information as they present it, as well as the internal surveys that were conducted for students and staff. So with that, I'll turn it back over again to Dr. Boone.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Our school climate survey, something that we administer every year, and this particular instrument has been in place for probably about nine or 10 years. And so you can see that we have attached this to the school board goals of safe and secure 21st century learning environments and community and parent engagement. And so some of the survey items that we have on our instrument are also part of the school board's accountability plan. The focus for the survey is that relationships matter and schools are provided this information really soon after we can get the results to them at the end of the school year. And then the parent survey information is shared upon completion of that process with K-12 Insight. Thank you. The themes, the major themes that we have selected based on our partnership with Dr. Tashanam Moran, a professor from William &amp; Mary, and her work is mostly related to relationships matter. I've highlighted relationships, trust, and support because it's one of the most important areas in looking at relationships. The relationships of administrators to teachers, teacher to teacher, teacher to students, teacher to parents, and students to students. And if you were able to look at our document that we provided along with this, it has a lot more detailed information per these themes. Overall, the district results of teachers and students, some of our results have shown some improvement but are still an area for improvement in such as student safety and behavior. Some of our school results continue to need improvement in relationships and as well as student safety and behavior. And you may see that somewhat of a theme throughout this. Our strengths based on teachers, students, and parents, one of the common theme is about teacher relationships. And we feel that this is a result of the work with teachers coming together in the individual learning sessions with focus schools, also seeing teachers work together to address concerns and whatnot at each of the schools. We also feel that, you know, it's an indication of our book talks, The Energy Bus and The Energy Vampire, if you will, that kind of takes, you know, takes the sting out of things. But also, You Are the Team is this year's book that we are working from. Areas for improvement are highlighted here. It is important to note that while it was a strength on the parent survey from community engagement, meaning they, that they are encouraging community engagement, but parents also would like to provide some input. So that's one of the things that we're talking to our schools about, various ways that they can allow parents to provide input at that school. Also morale could be affected by the, the lack of parental support and community engagement, you know, that come, that is falling under the teachers as an area of improvement. So we think that that might be linked, you know, sometimes teachers work very hard to reach out to parents, but they don't get the response that they are expecting.
Okay.
So our parent survey, a little bit of background, as Dr. Boone mentioned, it is hosted or was hosted by K-12 Insight. We had a slight decline. We only had 15, a little over 1,500 completed surveys, which was down from the previous survey year. We also extended our survey date from May 1st to July 9th, thinking that we would capture more, but we may have to explore that timeline. We did note that there was 26% that were military-connected and 29% that were MPS alumni.
Dr. Bailey, what's the approximate potential, I guess, pool that we could survey from? Do we have an approximate number?
Really, the entire district. So we open it up to all parents regardless of grade level.
And we don't have a number, like an approximate number of household parents? I mean?
Well, if we, let's just say if we use our total number of students, which we're hovering a little over 30,000, 31,000, you know, this is the response that we're getting back from parents.
Ms. Campson?
So we're not using a sample of parents anymore? We're sending it to everybody?
We're opening up to everybody.
Okay, okay.
So we've done some things to try to increase participation and working with our communications department. Certainly it's highlighted on the district website, but they have been working with schools to make sure that they have copies, hard copies at the schools should a parent want to fill that out, and then they can fill it out also online. They did some other things like had several robo-calls, and many of you may have experienced that.
Oh, yeah.
And so, so those are some of the things that we've been trying to do.
Okay. Ms. Basine?
Point of clarification, for parents or guardians that had more than one child, they were able to then complete multiple survey responses for that child's school. So those responses in here are not 1,508 parents slash guardians, but probably a number smaller than that.
So one parent could get a bigger say because they get, they fill one out for each of their students?
Correct. For each one of the students at a particular school. So like if you had one child in high school and one child in middle school, they, they have the ability to prepare a survey response for both schools.
Okay.
And they could be multiple responses in the same school. If they have three elementary kids, they could give three for the elementary?
Probably.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Basine?
Before, before we move on, I wanted to stop right here because I wanted to talk about the response rate. Because it's less than about five, it's about 5%, which is extremely low, and we can't make generalizations about what parents want or don't want. So I think we should be careful with that. But I noticed in the report that the invitations only went out to about 6,300 parents. Is that an issue with the number of emails that we have or, and, and contact information? Because that's then again, a very small percentage. And what are we doing to increase that?
I believe so. And if I could ask Dr. Legrand to participate in, in our discussion, she may be able to share more as relates to that.
Sure. I certainly agree that that could be something that impacts the results. One thing that we tried to work with prior to the survey going out was each school and their SDSs to make sure they were reminding people to update their information. We find that a lot of times the information that parents may fill out at the beginning of the year changes at the end of the year. And so as we've talked about how we work to improve this process going forward, that's something that we want to work on prior to the survey kicking off next year.
Okay. And I, okay, I have a couple related to that. So along that line, you know, there are several reminders, and those of us that know, we got lots of emails. And at what point, was there a mechanism in place that would kick back, that would say, okay, you're, the response is not going up and perhaps we should, I don't know if it's on us or on K-12, you know, that says, okay, something's not working here, this strategy is not necessarily working and?
Actually, I believe they did. They kept us posted on it, and that's what generated additional emails, additional calls, and the extension of the timeline for completion. Because when they said, hey, this is all we've gotten, and so that triggered our need to go in and do some other outreach. I agree with Dr. Bailey that I think the window was probably too long. And we, we need to shorten it and perhaps look at when we started and, you know, tie it to something else that, that parents will be able to do as they close out the school year.
And I know, do we train our school, like the principals and the staff in the school on how to, do we engage them in some way in increasing that response rate?
I will say, one of the things that we did was to ensure that posters were available for the schools to put out. We also engaged, engaged our community partners, like the redevelopment of the housing authority and some other community partners. We want to do that a bit more going forward. A point of clarification I did want to make- A point of clarification I did want to make is that even though a parent may not have given us the right information, they still were able to access the survey because it was online. So we certainly encourage people to go online. We had the ability this year to make sure that, from our communications department, we posted the information on every single school site. Because if you're a parent at Little Creek or Ocean Air, you may not necessarily go to the district site on a regular basis, but you probably are more likely to go to your school site. So that information was on that school site as well. And again, the number of robocalls and reminders that were put out there, text messages, you could do it from your phone and things of that nature. So depending on how people were signed up through Blackboard Connect, so K-12 had the ability to communicate with our parents, but we also used our Blackboard Connect system to do that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
There's just a couple things. But one, I would like to see you look at maybe doing this mid-year, you know, maybe in the second semester, sometime earlier in the year, and then there could be more engagement and encouragement. I know, as someone who's taken the survey, I saw it online. I mean, there were definitely a lot of efforts, but it really seems like it's the timing, because by May 1st, I think most parents are checked out, to be honest.
Yeah.
And you said that this was a nine to 10-year-old instrument? Does that mean it's the same survey as nine to 10 years ago?
The parent survey is not?
No. Parent survey, we worked with K-12 Insight last year. So we used a lot of their questions that they've tested, and we then reported a few of ours that we felt were important to include with theirs. So no, it is not that old of a survey for parents.
So it's fairly recent then, right?
For the parents, yeah.
Okay. As someone who's taken it, though, I remember being a little frustrated that the responses weren't exhaustive, not so much exclusive. I think they were fairly exclusive, but exhaustive. So there were options on there that were missing. So I'd encourage you to go back and, you know, reevaluate that. And also, does the safety and security portion of it satisfy the requirements of the state? The reports, the survey, is that something that's reported?
Well, we report...
Or is that a separate one?
Yeah, that's a separate report. The state school, I think they still horrible name, Crime and Violence School Safety Report, I'm looking at Dr. Harold Lance, is a very separate report. And that's usually based, primarily based on our student discipline information, what type of infractions, what were the consequences of those. And that's what we report in that particular state requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clinton?
Yeah, just, has there been any thought to the number of questions that we're asking?
We have talked about that over the years, and certainly we refined the initial instrument to cut back on them. But we were also trying to be able to be informed based on the themes. But that is a conversation that we talk about every year. And so this year, as we talk about our next steps and whatnot, we'll be looking at that and just reevaluating, what is it that we want to be informed about?
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One question, one comment. So I may have missed it. So what is considered a successful response rate for a division like ours on a survey like this? I know we were talking about, we were, how few or what the number is in terms of response rate in completed surveys? What isn't a good goal or target? You know, like in direct mail, they say 3% or whatever. I'm just trying to figure out, what should it be? Or are we just kind of saying, we know we want it to be more, but we haven't really thought about what the target should be?
I'm not sure. Like, I know the answer to that.
Okay.
I can remember back when we used to do parent surveys, and we mailed them out with self-contained envelopes to mail back to a vendor to do the scanning. We would only get about 2,000 valid responses out of about 20,000 that were mailed out. So roughly, it was running about 9 to 10 to 11% response rate. And now that case, we were not sending it to every parent, but we were sending it to over 75% of the parents slash guardians in the city. So there was a maximum of 10% response rate. So if we got a 10% response rate, we would expect to see probably about 2,500 probably responses.
So it might be good, is, you know, I was just looking in the dashboard where we established some goals related to performance measures associated with the climate survey, but we may want to just have a talk about what's realistic?
Mm-hmm.
And are we getting what's realistic or not?
Yeah.
The other thing I was just going to say in terms of comment, in my experience or in my exposure, people respond or provide feedback in different ways. So one way may be a survey. I know for me, I didn't like filling out surveys. I like going and talking directly to teachers and principals. So it's a lot of feedback that we may be receiving directly from folks who are more comfortable with a relationship-based way of providing feedback versus somebody who may like, you know, filling out a survey. So I think also, as part of our discussion, we may want to consider, are there multiple pathways out there for us to glean what the feeling is out there in terms of our climate survey? And then also acknowledging the fact that, you know, there may be some number in the science that says that they're just people that don't want you to know.
That don't do it.
And so, you know, we have to be willing to accept that as well. But I think we can look in that, in those different pathways, and really get a good sense of what it is that the board and the team as a whole is really trying to achieve, and then are we there or not? So, just wondering.
Yeah, I think it's a good goal for us to at least start somewhere. And I guess if we don't have a good amount of data or don't know what that goal would be for a division our size, for the factors that we put into it, but surely we want to go up. And we, you know, just passed the engagement, family engagement policy, and we know that lots of our students are connected, at least on the elementary level, with a variety of apps where the parents send the information to, or the teachers will send the information to the parents, and perhaps we can link it there. But definitely, I think that you all are, with going to the K-12, it was an effort to try to engage more families. And I give you kudos for continuing to try to engage more families. It looks like we still have more work to do.
I can add just a couple of points of clarification. Typically, in marketing, if you get a 2% to 5% response rate, it typically is a success. We, of course, want more because we can directly engage. I agree with Mr. Jordan's point about how we get that feedback. I know that I didn't find the importance of surveys until I worked on my doctorate, and I needed people to participate. And so I certainly saw the importance change for me there. And then the other piece of that is wanting to make sure that we reach various people through different means. Some people, one of the conversations that we had recently was maybe having a computer or something set up during the survey time at the front desk, where someone could drop their child off and fill out the survey right there, having it available in other areas or other times and certain areas of the school, whether performances are going on or something like that. And then the other thing is that we did ask the question to K-12 when we recently talked to them. I asked the question if they could give us a comparative analysis as to the other districts that they're working with and what their response rates are. So points will take it, and we certainly will continue on.
All right, we have a lot more to go on the presentation. Do you, do we go to the next one?
Yeah, all right. And, you know, certainly, as we go on, surveying is just, it's a perception at a given point in time. And certainly during that time period, yes, parents are closing out and ready to go on vacation. Some of the strengths that the parents highlighted for us is that they felt like their school, their child's school was good or excellent, and that was increased from the previous year, as well as they were very favorable about the support that their child was given at the school. Certainly, areas for growth, dealing with responsiveness to bullying and include family input to improve instruction. Parents were asked about frequency of communication for various aspects of the district. Certainly, the top eight are in order. And this provides a pretty good snapshot of how they want to be informed. With the very top two are related to students and curriculum. So they definitely like to be informed about how their students are doing and what's happening with the curriculum. The top three areas of how they'd like to be informed, certainly automated phone calls, or hear about information via emails or text messages. And I think we've done a really, really good job in helping to inform our parents about what's going on via these methods. In summary, we talked about strengths and opportunities to grow. Our professional learning committees that are taking place provides an opportunities for principals to share results with staff about what's working and to discuss the areas of concern. Those are, there is a list of items of continued work in schools. Specifically, new this year is Character Education, piloting a program that highlights kindness. In our detailed report, we have two correlations that we have done, certainly inter-correlated among the items, as well as correlated with SOLs. And in summary, the more positive students feel about their school, the higher the correlation is to the SOL performance. Ms. Basine?
Madam Chair? So in reading the report, you know, I appreciate the correlations and the scatter plot that you showed. And of particular importance that, I think, is in that analysis, it showed that the trust between teacher and student was significantly impacted based on socioeconomic status. And that's something that I, you know, as far as talking about the elephant in the room, I think we really, I'm putting that on the table, because going through that report and seeing the data and seeing that piece, and to me, you know, you can't talk about student achievement without talking about school climate and building relationships. And that is so, so important. And to see that data put in that way, I think is something that we need to put forward and be open about that and what we're going to do to address it. And we've talked about implicit bias training among the board, which I think we should still pursue. But I'd also like to see or hear about strategies that we might be using in the school buildings. Because I certainly think that a lot of organizations are moving to that where it's just standard practice to do that training. So, because our students should not walk away from their school day with that feeling.
Ms. Kamson?
We've done, we do student surveys and parent surveys and teacher surveys. Is that correct? There was a time when we did principal surveys. And is there some thought to bringing that back? Because I think that the beliefs and the feelings and all that principals have impact what happens in their school.
Mm-hmm.
So where are we with something? I know it's come up a number of times. It was there and it went away. And principals ask a lot about bringing it back.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still a possibility?
I would have to, certainly, we've had some discussion about that, and it's a different type of survey that we can do. And so I would ask that Dr. Gabrielle and Dr. Boone get together and talk about what the board might like for the district to do with respect to that.
Okay, thank you.
May I add? There's also been a request, and we've started entertaining it, to make sure that our classified staff in schools can also have a way of giving input in surveys. So we've started those discussions also.
Thank you, that's really good information.
Great.
Madam Chair, I just want to, before I forget this here. And Dr. Boone, I'll share this with you. It was a recommendation coming back from the CUBE conference on the diversity implicit bias session, which I thought was dynamic, the provider. Dr. Bryant Marks from Morehouse College. And I thought he did a great job. And I wanted to see whether or not NSBA would have an actual video copy of it, because I thought it would be great to be able to share and utilize, and even possibly have him come.
Implicit bias training?
I've actually had several ongoing conversations with Dr. Gomita, with EVMS, who does the implicit bias training for a lot of the physicians there. So it's carving out time on our schedule and putting it down there, because I think that it would be very valuable for us as well. So several items that we are taking away from today, which is good. Thank you.
So, and just a brief summary, or not brief summary, but just a briefing on our next steps. Certainly, we explore, how can we increase participation from our parents? We're excited about working with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council to share this information, to get some feedback. Certainly, they represent high schools, but they are students, and it gives us opportunity for their input. And in closing, I believe our Department of Student Support Services will be checking to ensure information on safety and bullying are available on the district and department website. And so this completes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boone. And Ms. Basine?
Do you feel with, because I think the themes were pretty prominent between, for, with a pretty decent response rate for students and teachers around bullying and harassment? And Dr. Lance might have some input, too. But do you feel that our policies need strengthening? Or is it really in the enforcement and accessibility and how one might report harassment? Or what the, you know, what the follow-through is? I just, I wonder if we...
Dr. Boone?
If I may start, and Dr. Harold Lance can certainly add on. I don't think it's, the policy is not meeting the needs. I think we've got to really work on the training of what defines bullying?
Mm-hmm.
What defines harassment? And I think we have to go back to that level, because what someone reports as bullying, that's their perception. And so we've got to understand that when we investigate or receive those comments, that we don't necessarily just apply our lens of what bullying is, but to be sure that we have a very strong definition of what bullying is and how we address that and deal with that going forward. I think that piece of consistency, and just how do we deal with that? You know, we went through that years ago when we had to do harassment training for all staff.
Mm-hmm.
And two things must happen. One, when it's reported, we must look into it.
Mm-hmm.
We can't ignore it. And I think sometimes that's a perception, or it may be unfortunately a reality in some occasions, that it hasn't been fully investigated. And two, making sure that we go into this, again, with a district mindset based on what the policy says and what best practices says these items, how they are defined, and making sure that's what we are implementing across the board.
Thank you.
So I want to just thank Dr. Legrande for, you know, participating, you know, with our discussion, and certainly Dr. Elsie, Harold Lance, and Dr. Kim Grave, and John Coleman for providing us input.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's, if the board will allow us to go into the next topic of discussion, and then we can take a break before we do the legislative update. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So we... As a board, we've had some discussion about how we wanted to go about with the position of our clerk. Right now, we have Mr. Butts, who is functioning in as our deputy clerk, and we thank him for that. Thank you. But I think it's very important, as we try to function as a governance team, that we feel that our needs are being met as a board, as we want to function together and going forward. And again, this discussion is very important, I think, because now we are fully elected, and we want the processes that we put in place to outlast generations of board members. And we want to try to work towards getting a system in place that's a best practice. And so with that in mind, I felt that we needed to have an open discussion about what the desires are from board members in moving forward. What we have before us right now is Dr. Boone's recommendation. She had put out beforehand that to have a full-time grant writer within the division. Was it a full-time grant writer?
Part-time.
A part-time, sorry, a part-time grant writer. And we were not able to fill that position. And so in an effort to try to retain somebody for the grant writer position... And so in an effort to try to retain somebody for the grant writer position, and Dr. Boone, certainly correct me if I'm not stating this correctly, merge it with a position for clerk of the board. So that's a very short snapshot into the history of where we are today. Mr. Jordan provided some very good historical context of a survey that the VSB did while we were looking at some items with regard to the clerk's position in the past. So I thank him for sharing that with everyone. So that being said, I'd like to just open the floor to any discussion points that board members have with regards to the position as it stands right now, as it being a combined position. And the goal is to try to get to a consensus as to what the board as a whole would like in moving forward.
Ms. Kamson?
Well, I strongly would like to see us have a full-time clerk as we've had, as the school has had in most of the past. I think that we need someone who can devote their time to us because there's seven of us. We, we don't have a staff. And there are a lot of things that we need to have done. Mr. Butts has done an excellent job of getting us things, but we can't have him do all of the things. I mean, I'd like to see a lot more things done. As we have all these things here, and I have some other things that I'd like to see in there that we're taking care of. Even when we were in the board docs training, we looked at the ways that he could be updating in there so we did not have any outdated information. I think it's extremely important that we have a full, and to open our, our school board office and organize materials. I have notebooks and things from the boards that I'm on that need to really be in there. It would have been nice, before I went to the first access board meeting where they gave me a huge notebook, because the other people were just getting, you know, inserts. But what if that were here, it was kept on a shelf? I could take it when I needed it. And then when we rotated and someone else entered that board, they could just take it and look at it ahead. When I walked into that board meeting, I wasn't sure exactly what I'd see, but I would have been able to preview that ahead. Those kinds of things, we need the office set up. And we need a clerk that's totally devoted to us and the needs that we could expand what the clerk is able to do for. So I'm strongly advocating for a full-time position there.
Okay. Would anyone else like to add comment?
May I?
Yes.
And I want the board to understand that this is not a hill I was willing to die on. I do, you, Madam Chair, were one that routinely asked where we with the grant writer position. And we had not been able to fill the part-time. So this is in response to queries about how we got there. I don't have a preference one way or another.
What is the cost associated with the two? The board clerk and grant writer, and then just the board clerk?
With the salary?
The salary range, we will have to pull, pull the, let me see if it's on the, I don't know if it's on the position descriptions that we provided the board, the salary range. But we, the position as it currently exists is a person with a degree, I believe. Again, all of that is up to how the board would want to, to facilitate that. Go down to the bottom of that and see.
And as a part-time grant writer, how much bang are we really gonna get from someone performing that function part-time? And then servicing us, so to speak, part-time as well?
I don't disagree. I'm just trying, it was an unmet need and I was trying to, again, manage the funds. What we had set aside was about 50,000 for the part-time grant writer was what we had in there.
Ms. Basine?
Can you, can you refresh us on, so I see the position description for the clerk and grant writer, well, for both of them, where they're derived from?
Dr. Boone?
The clerk of the board portion was the existing clerk description, job description, that was updated because the existing one didn't have any reference to board docs and that type of technology support. So that's where that piece was updated. The grant writer, we actually did research with a couple of different school districts, Newport News and several others. And we pulled back of what thought would make sense for Norfolk. So that's where the grant writer came from.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Hi. Can you explain to us how the grants are being sought currently?
Currently, individual departments, individual schools. Of course, our work that goes on with competitive as well as entitlement, with entitlement grants, those programs, folks like the Title I, Special Education, Career and Tech Ed, they are responsible for maintaining in, with the support of finance and our, finance. And that's how they are managed. We're limited in terms of how many other non-competitive grant, or how many competitive grants we are able to seek. There are things out there and we've had some success. I will have to pull data to tell you what those dollars have looked like, but it's a real gap for us.
Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clayton?
Yeah. I had mentioned when I was, went back, because I remember we had had some discussions around this previous and that's when I went and pulled this old info. I just want to get some clarity. So to me, I, I've heard some conversation about the clerk. But to me, this is the first time we've really had a chance to talk about it in depth as a full board. I'd just like to get some clarity. What, what are we trying to determine? Are we trying to determine whether or not we should have a full-time clerk or the hybrid position? And that's what we're discussing and therefore amending the budget accordingly to support whatever that will is? Are we trying to have a discussion? I know there was some things, at least as I was reading through the job description, just from some comments I've heard. Are we trying to figure out who the clerk reports to? What, what is it that we are discussing at this time? And would you like to try to drive towards consensus?
Sure. I think what ultimately we want to end on with this discussion is, do we want the position to be combined or do we want it to be separate? Speaking just for the board clerk, I, I mean, I think it would be great if we could have a full-time grant writer as well. I don't know if we even have that in our budget, if Dr. Boone could, you know, make it happen. But I think those two positions need to be separate. And that's what I would like to drive us to, at least for today. And then if we want to go ahead and have that discussion about the roles and the reporting, we, we certainly can, that might take a little bit more time. But I think for us and for the time that we have right now and for advertising, we need to be really, we need to be clear to Dr. Boone truthfully of what our desire is. We need to be respectful of that.
May I speak to that then? So, you know, as Dr. Boone was saying earlier, you know, we struggled with this over the last couple of years because the board asked Dr. Boone to give us some recommendations on how to address, in that time, the focus was on the, the grant writer. And then as we were going through the budget, we were trying to balance the, the needs of the school board, the efforts to try to, you know, we were asking the administration to try to be judicious in terms of central administration and positions and spending and so forth. And so when we approved the, the budget that we currently have for this year, that was where the recommendation came for, for this hybrid. And so we have a budget right now that allows for the hybrid position. And I think human resources and Dr. Boone was trying to move forward with filling that position. That I think we're here today because maybe we don't want to do that. So if we do decide to separate, which doesn't really matter to me one way or the other, I do think we'll have to go back and look at the budget and make amendments to the budget to support what we believe is going to be the estimated cost for a, if we decide to separate. If it's the will of the board to have a full-time grant writer, any full-time clerk, then I believe that's going to require some changes to the, to the budget. And then that will then may result in some other changes to the budget. Because remember, we went through a lot of effort trying to prioritize where we would be. So, you know, to me, six, six in one hand, half dozen in the other. I'd just like for us to make a decision because I think that there are some areas that are far more critical for us to address that we've talked about earlier on academics and accountability and so forth than spend too much more additional time on, on this.
Right. I mean-
That's just my, my, my feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
May I remind the board that in the motion to appoint Mr. Butts as deputy clerk, acting as the clerk, sun sets November 1st.
Yes.
So that's why we were trying to push this out.
Mr. Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd just like to, if I can make a comment and then back to what Mr. Jordan said. It doesn't necessarily mean, because it's been a while, and Dr. Boone, you could probably answer this. How long has it been since we've had a grant writer?
A long time.
A long time. I'd guess it was Gary Ruhsager, I guess, probably the last person.
And when I was here, we had a grant writer. So I don't know when the position was.
Yeah.
But for some of the others, around Gary Ruhsager, was probably the last one that was here. And we, we know Gary, he was very, was great in the role and he was there. But we've been without one for a while. So even if we move, I know that there's effort of the former board to do a hybrid role. But if we move as far as the budget implications and just went with the clerk and we spent more time, as we're talking about accountability plan and also how that would kind of feed into that and supporting us overall for strategic plan that maybe we look at the grant writing a little bit more throughout this year and we build it into the next budget. So, you know, that might be an option that we may be able to go with. But I would, my view is, is that we need a full-time clerk. Having a different vantage point being here. There's a lot more goes on behind the scenes with the clerk in the role. And now that we're elected, there's a lot more things that we have in the community. And, and there's some other procedural things that I would like to, to see the clerk help support the board with as we're doing things. But I'd like to see a full-time clerk. If we come back to the, the discussion about where it reports and all that other stuff, we can do that another time. But I think at least today, being able to have a consensus around moving forward with a full-time clerk and giving Dr. Boone and administration direction on posting and being able to fill that position.
Ms. Smith?
To me, a grant writer will be more beneficial to the district as a whole than having a full-time clerk for, exclusively for the board or a hybrid of a grant writer clerk.
We, we don't doubt that. The, the problem is that the position was posted as a part-time grant writer and there were no bites. And so right now, Mr. Butts, the motion is gonna expire in November. And so we have to make a decision as to how we want to move forward. And, and a lot of other divisions, the position is, has not just the clerk position, but there are other duties that are put onto it. And I know that, that several of our administrators, our content coordinators, they, they look out and try to get grants for their own departments. I mean, I think the Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation was one grant that Danielle Robey went and sought out and, and tried to get. So I don't disagree that the, the division needs a grant writer. And we need to support the staff members who are applying for grants on their own time. But we do need to have support as a board, I, I believe. And I have no problem building that in the budget this year. The grant writer position, as we move forward to try to get our accountability plan to where we need it to be to, to move forward.
So what is Mr. Butts' current position? He's, he's part yours, correct, and part ours?
That's correct. He serves as deputy clerk and is secretary to the school board, I mean, to the superintendent.
And can't we extend that?
That's the, that's the board's call.
We could. We could. I mean, we could.
I'm just saying, there, there are various options that we can use.
There are.
The one that's on the, the two that are on the table aren't the only ones that are available to us.
No. And, and if, and if, and if you feel that you would like to just keep the position posted right now as a joint grant writer and a joint clerk, then that's an option. The other option is to, come November 1st, reaffirm the motion for Mr., for Mr. Butts to continue in as clerk for the board. You know, that's, so that's what I need to hear from you.
That's, that's where I'm leaning.
Okay.
Continue, Mr. Butts, as he's currently operating. And we seek the full-time grant writer position. Because that's gonna serve our district way better than us having a full-time clerk.
Well, okay. I'm not sure if that would change, still change what the current position is that Mr. Butts is serving in, because then we would be altering it to a full-time grant writer position. But-
No, I think, Madam Chair, they're saying just keep Mr. Butts as is, continuing on and making a motion to do that.
To do the full-time grant writer.
Which I'm not in agreement with.
Okay. Ms. Basine?
Yeah. I would support that. But I think we may not be on the same page about what we foresee as task. Because I've heard, you know, now that we're elected officials, that there may be other tasks that we may not be on the same page about. So I think until we're clear about what the tasks are, it's hard to determine whether this individual is a full-time or a part-time clerk.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
I was gonna echo the same thing. I'm not clear what problem we're trying to solve. But every time I hear the comment about the elected versus appointed, it makes me nervous.
Yeah.
And I think we just have to be, I'd just like to hear, being elected, what it is that we would expect the clerk to do differently. Because I think we have to be careful in terms of our responsibilities and how we use district resources. So, you know, we, as elected officials, you know, if you wanna go out and do some event, you know, you do that. It's not the clerk's. You know, we don't use public resources for that. That's our resources. So I'm not sure what it is we are expecting because we're elected. So I think that would help to clarify the-
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Dr. Boone, I'd like to hear from you about your, your perspective on how sharing Mr. Butts has been with us as the deputy clerk, you know, his capacity of work, workload, and, you know, how it relates to the discussion here, please.
Well, I think, again, he's unencumbered. I've made sure that he's unencumbered to do what, what he needs to do to support the board. Ms. Phil, the admin assistant, they, they work well together in terms of sharing. But there are, there are a lot of things that they have to ping, switch back and forth with each other in order to make it happen. But he's extremely well organized. And so I think you all have been the beneficiaries of, of that organization. And I think that's how he, he makes it work.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to just address, I guess, the question that was, I guess, to my comment about being elected officials and the additional work that we have. The emails, the, the requests, when we get things that, that come in, correspondence and following back up. In no way, I'm talking about using public dollars for, you know, putting on, you know, special events or what else. But there's a certain accountability for us to make sure that we're getting back and that we've got some support for that. I've also experienced, I'm working with the chair and, and building our agendas, just, just a lot of different things. And I guess the learning curve that comes with that. But most importantly, I, I ask that you look at a three-page job description. It's not a one-page job description. There are a lot of things that are involved in this particular role. To set up this room, to take it down, to get our packages, to make sure that the board docs items are there, that they're correct, what goes out. I mean, there's a lot of different things that go on with that role. And, and going back to, you know, and I agree with Ms. Smith in the respect that a board, a, a, a grant writer would be very beneficial. And, and all consideration, it's a revenue generating FTE to the district. But I would pose the other question that this might be a collaboration effort with the city. Have we discussed about their grant writer? Or discussed working with the city in Norfolk to consolidate and those efforts there? Because a lot of times, it's not just the, the city or the public schools shouldering it. A lot of times, you've got to work with the city and other partners, particularly when we look at federal grants. So there may be another option on the table. But I, again, reiterate my strong opinion that we need to have a full-time clerk who begins to work with us and as we begin to build our processes so that we can better support the district in carrying out our roles and responsibilities.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Okay, I'll go ahead and just say where I stand. I think that we should have two separate positions. I want a full-time grant writer, because I think, it sounds like there's some lost opportunities. And, and, you know, I think that it's a really good idea. I, I love the initiative that some of our departments are, are reaching out and, and doing those grants on their own. But I also think having a grant writer will help to really, with the tracking of all the activities and offer some assistance and also be able to work independently. I like the idea of having a dedicated clerk, and this is why. As a new school board member, and, and I think, I'll honestly say that the elected versus not elected, I don't, I don't see how that's relevant. But, but as a- But, but as a new school board member, I felt like we could have had a better orientation package, orientation to, you know, to get us ramped up and, and moving forward a lot quicker. And I also am, I have been very frustrated with the communication. It's not streamlined. So when I am looking through all these emails coming from, you know, different organizations and so forth, and trying to prioritize where my time's going to be spent, I'm looking to, on what Mr. Butts is sending me as the go-to. That's the priority for me. And so I've realized that I've missed out on some meetings that I really would have wanted to be, wanted, wanted to have attended because it was, it didn't go through a designated clerk. And I, and again, I don't want any of this to take away from what Mr. Butts has been doing. I think he's been doing an excellent job. And if he ends up being our person, I will be very happy. But I just want to make that clear that I, I do see value in having a dedicated person.
Okay. All right. And I see value in having the positions as separate as well. Full-time for a grant writer and full-time for a clerk. So I think what we have to do then, Dr. Boone, if, whatever steps we need to take as far as the budget and the position posting for the clerk, if you could just have that brought back to the board and what direction we need to take from there, if there's any budgetary amendments that we need to make or consider, then I would ask if you could go ahead and do that.
Madam Chair, can you clarify? Is that for both positions or are we just talking about the clerk?
Well, I think, I think for right now, the focus is on the clerk position. And then if we can build within the budget for this year, coming up, the full-time grant writer, I think that would be acceptable unless I hear otherwise.
I just want to.
I'm just not convinced that we have enough work for a full-time clerk.
That's.
Well, my question's going to be, we went from discussion to direction. Are you, how did you tally the board's will?
Well, I hear Ms. Smith is in support of a full-time grant writer and to continue on with Mr. Butts in the role that he is serving right now. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Ms. Basine?
I too support that.
She supports that. Mr. Jordan?
I'm comfortable with that for now. I think we should maintain the status quo, because I'm not seeing a problem, and build it into our budget discussions moving forward if we're going to make a change. Follow what I'm saying? In other words, I'm not aware, I'm, I'm still not comfortable that I've heard what the problem is. So that since we're going to go through a budgets process anyway, and at some point, we're going to establish board goals and priorities, to me, this could be an outcome of that, of that effort. And then if it's a decision that we want to do something, have a full-time grant writer and a full-time clerk, we need to set that as part of our priorities that we give to the administration. So as they bring back a proposed budget for us, they can, they can integrate that rather than kind of unraveling or redoing the, the budget process when we're just, what, three months into the, into the budget year.
I, I understand that. And.
It's just my, my, my opinion.
Sure. And, and since this is our first group discussion of this topic, I do understand that and I do want to be sensitive to that. So what I will do is I will take everyone's opinion that I've heard into consideration and we're going to reach a consensus by the next meeting, our next formal meeting.
Madam Chair?
Now, I'm confused. Because I was trying to figure out, were you asking me to go ahead and post as a separate position so that we can initiate that process? Or are we holding on to posting until the board reaches consensus or direction?
Well, just, Mr. Clinton?
Yeah, I, I think that if you could just finish with the rest of the consensus, I think we'll have a better understanding of where we are.
Ms. Campson?
Well, I'm where I started. I think we need a full-time clerk. I'm not clear why there's a budget problem. We were paying a full-time clerk last year. Did that money just disappear? I mean, into some other line, I mean, disappear?
We have what your choices right now.
People are talking about the money. I mean, everyone else gave an explanation. And I've assumed that there was money already there for the clerk position. It just, it didn't just disappear. I, I thought this was a proposal to change that. That, that this is the change proposal. That the initial position was a full-time position that, and it's just unfilled, was my understanding. Did, was it not filled last year, even though that person went out on leave? That person was, continued to be paid till the end of the year? No?
If I may, when the budget was presented to the board, superintendent proposes a budget, board deals with it, and once they approve, that's what goes to council. In that document, it was identified as a clerk and grant writer. That's when the transition occurred. That was in the proposal that superintendent made to the board. So I didn't go off separate from anything else. Once that, that change had been done, that was what was, what was there. The money for the position is there. What's not there is the money for two full-time positions. There's money there for one position, however, the board decides to define it.
So the, the previous board voted to already, had already done this vote once already and decided to go with a combined position before the new board came in.
The budget.
Okay. I, well, I still feel that it should be full-time like it has been in the past. Because I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, especially with the organization. I also agree with Mrs. Martin when she said, when we came in, it would have been nice to have all that stuff ready, all organized in, in the office that's sitting over there, kind of looking like a storage room right now. I think we need it as we move forward. So, yes, full-time position. And I certainly would be happy to see a grant writer. But I think we need a full-time clerk right now.
Okay. We have an office?
We have a school board office.
Yes, I stand on what I said previously.
All right. So.
Definitely a full-time grant writer.
But for right now, for right now, would, would your priority be a full-time clerk or a full-time grant writer?
I think they're both important. I think, I think a full-time grant writer would be definitely needed, yes.
So just to be clear, we have funds in the budget for one full-time position. We can continue on right now with how we have it. With Mr. Butts doing the shared responsibilities for the board and then post that position as a grant writing position right now. Or we can move forward with posting that position as a clerk position and then build the grant writing position into the budget.
For next year?
For next year. Because it, it doesn't seem that we can do that within this year.
I ask a quick question while she's thinking.
Sure.
Why is it that the only position in the whole district that can be, the money can come from our, only the clerk position, if we're looking at money? Why can't we combine it with something else? I mean, I'm not clear why the only source of money for a grant, grant writer needs to come from the board's one person, one assistant, which is our clerk. I mean, I'm not clear why that's the only place to get grant writer money.
I, I, I wouldn't be sure on that either. But, I mean, I think this, this is why we're having this discussion. Because folks have brought this to my attention and I think that we need to have this discussion as a whole board to explore other options, other thoughts and considerations. And so it seems like to me that we, some people are very sure about where they stand and, you know, and we, but we do need to move forward with what we want to do with the position to at least give Dr. Boone some guidance.
Yeah, I think, I, I think they, if Sherman's willing to, to put up with us a little longer, I'd like to have a grant writer. And I think that's important. And, I mean, they're both important. But, and then consider changes to the clerk position as we move forward.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Boone?
No, I was just going to say, if we can take personality out and let's talk about what it is that the board is trying to do, is, I think it's kind of awkward.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree.
I just think he's done a good job so far.
And I appreciate that. I mean, certainly, he's been a very effective team member with me also. But if we can keep it to what direction the board wants to go. If part of it is to continue what we're doing and post, I, I just need to know which way we want to do.
Exactly. So.
I mean, objectively, I do think that we do, we do need some, to consider what, what are the job description. I mean, we see a job description here, but it seems like not everybody was expecting that conversation, right? That there's a desire for more discussion about that. That time commitment for the clerk. So I think we should have that.
Okay. So this is what I'm going to do. We've had the discussion. We need to give Dr. Boone some direction, at least by our next meeting. That's, that's what my goal will be. And so if there are any other thoughts that you have about the position or any other points of consideration, please send them to myself and Mr. Clinton and Dr. Boone. And then we're going to come to a consensus with how Dr. Boone can then post that position, whether it be full-time grant writer, full-time clerk, or leave it as it is. Okay?
I'd just like to point out that if we wait to the next board meeting, depending on whatever decision or action that we take, and we'll have to readdress the motion that we made back at our organizational meeting in regards to deputy clerk position. And particularly when it comes to the qualifications on this page. So I, I would strongly urge the members of the board to review this here and be prepared when we come back to really address this and talk about it and take action.
Just one final thing for clarification. So we approved the budget last year. It had the combined position. Under normal circumstances, this position, like teachers' positions or any positions, would be advertised. The position has never been advertised. Is that correct?
That is correct, because the questions about the shared position emerged in July.
So the process is somewhere, the decision was made not to advertise the position, not to allow the position to be advertised. I'm not clear on, just not clear on how that occurred. But I would simply say that if we would allow for the position to be advertised, maybe that would help to give us some determination as to whether or not there is interest. I don't know how, I'm not sure how it was determined.
I don't know how it was determined either.
Actually, if, if we can, to read out the individuals' memories, we were in a meeting in July at Norfolk State University and that's how that happened. We, we took a vote to extend.
No, no, I understand that piece.
Yeah, we did that piece. And then in doing so, it was to have, come back and have conversation about this particular role. Now, we're just getting to this conversation, unfortunately.
Yeah, so I, I'm fine if that was the case. But I just think in terms of where we are, trying to stay at a governance level and allowing the administration to do what we've hired them to do, that if, if we would get out of the way of it, the position could be advertised and move forward.
I agree with you. This is a unique position unlike any other position. And so, as I said before, it is about the best practices moving forward. And that's, that's the direction that I would like to steer the board in. And so I, I do appreciate the comments. Ms. Basine, you had one last one. You were good.
Well, I, I was just going to clarify, because I thought earlier it sounded like it had been advertised.
Yeah, that's my question too, yeah.
There was no interest is what came, what I thought I heard. Right? Is that what you heard?
Part-time grant writer, I think. That's what you were talking about.
In our solicitation for applicants for the part-time grant writer, we had not been successful. This position, because of the discussion in July, has not been posted, waiting for direction from the board.
We were supposed to talk about it in August and we didn't.
Yeah. I just wanted clarity on that, on that comment, because, yeah, I just.
Right. Okay. So thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us today as it pertains to this job position. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and then come back to do the legislative topics. The last part of our discussion tonight involves how we work with our elected counterparts in moving, in very important discussion points with regards to legislative matters and activities. Policies, budgets are made at the state level and they directly impact student performance. And it's very important for us as board members to make sure that our elected officials understand what goes on in the school buildings each and every day and how their policies and budgets directly impact how teachers are teaching in the building, how students feel and are receiving that education. So with that in mind, we are kicking off one of many discussion topics with regards to our legislative priorities agenda. This is the first one. It's going to be a very basic overview. We have some guests that have traveled to be with us today and we're very appreciative for them for being here. I'm going to open tonight's discussion with guests that haven't traveled too far there, right here within Norfolk, our, our elections department within the city. If you all would like to come over to our table over here. And they have some important legislative items that it would like to bring to our attention. And I'd also like to ask, Dr. Boone, is there anything that you would like to state on behalf as far as our legislative priorities, topics as we begin this discussion? You can borrow mine.
In terms of the legislative agenda itself, I might defer that to, to other conversations. But I certainly want to say thank you for the great working relationship that the district has with Stephanie Isles and, and the elections department and area. Many of our schools serve as polling places. And we do have to work closely together. As a matter of fact, today I signed the, the November 6th memo. And so, but we do really have a, a great working relationship and do some problem solving together as it relates to certain aspects of the work. One of the reasons that we now have the November Virtual Teacher Work Day is because of the conversations with Ms. Isles and, and others at the Elections Board. And the, having schools as a polling place is not a problem, but our elementary schools have such limited parking that this gave us a way of addressing the work needs and allowing teachers, because it's usually at the end of the quarter to post information they need to do for grades, et cetera, and yet have the building parking available so that the November general election is generally, is, is, I think, some of our largest participation. And so I certainly appreciate the, the working with Ms. Isles and, and wanted to say that.
Thank you. Ms. Isles?
With me tonight, by the way, are our chairwoman Barbara Claire and our secretary, Mike Zigg and Foose. So, and the other board member couldn't be here this evening, but they came to support. Thank you for that. Norfolk is progressive in the fact that we do close for the November elections. Not every locality does do that. I will tell you that the House Select Committee for School Safety from the General Assembly has been reviewing measures with regards to school safety, particularly after what's happened over the last several years and most recently with the Parkland shootings. One of their recommendations is to make that November Election Day a state holiday. And that's one of the things that's coming out of that committee, which would be great. Not only would it be beneficial for the schools, but I think it would increase voter turnout for persons that work and can't always get off work to come and vote on Election Day. The reason I was coming to speak with you tonight is the Virginia Electoral Board Association, which is known as VIBA, and the Voter Register Association of Virginia, which I'm a member of and I'm the director for the Tidewater Region, have come up with a bill in conjunction with school safety. We've approached members of the House and Senate with the General Assembly and there is a House bill that's being put forward. It's House Bill 1615, 1615. And that is to request to move the June primary date from the second Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in June. We know how much fun June primaries are, especially when it's the last week of school, graduation activities, closing school activities, kids are getting off school early, buses are coming and going, parents are trying to get their kids and attend all these activities. If we move it to the third. If we move it to the third Tuesday in June, school's done, as far as Norfolk's concerned. Most of the time. Not a nine point nine. I know there's summer school activities, there may be some summer school activities, but we. One of the things where we've had a problem in the past with trying to get this approved through the General Assembly. With the concern with school safety and the use of schools. We utilize utilize twenty-three schools in Norfolk as polling places right now, out of our forty-eight, twenty-three year schools. Besides schools, I've got thirteen recreation and community centers where my kids go. I've got three libraries, four churches, the zoo, the Chrysler Museum. The Croc Center and the Ocean View Golf Course, so everywhere we have children as well as adults. Um and we wanna make sure that 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 safety concern is addressed. By removing the students and the faculty from that with moving the primary to the third Tuesday, we think we would accomplish that. And we would continue to work with schools as we have in the past to notify them of our calendars when elections would be coming up. As far as presidential primaries, which are typically in March, sometimes February, but typically in March. As well as any May elections, so maybe we could work and coordinate for other days to make those possible teacher workdays. Um in advance because we have our calendar up through twenty twenty-two. We're hoping with this to get your support. Delegate Steve Landis is patroning the bill on the House side. Senator Jill Vogel has agreed to co-patron a sponsorship bill on the Senate side. We have several co-patrons on the House side for this House bill, delegates Betsy Carr, Chris Peace, Bob Thomas Jr. and our own Steve Heretic. Have agreed to sponsor this, so we're hoping, speaking with you tonight, to get your support. And if you do so, support that, we would like to send a message to Delegate Landis who is sponsoring this bill. To let him know that you all agree with that as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions, so.
Can, let me let Dr. Boone make a um uh her comment.
The senior team and I actually looked at the calendar to see, you know, in general. And it it works well except when Labor Day is late. So not to make it a, wouldn't make it a barrier to to the bill, I think the bill is great. But whenever Labor Day is late. So for example, in when we looked at twenty twenty. The month comes in on a Tuesday, so Labor Day is always the first Monday. So the first day of school in twenty twenty wouldn't be until September eighth. Which means that's gonna push us very close into that um third week. Because the third Tuesday in twenty twenty-one is June fifteenth, so that will put us right there, potentially at school closing. So I just just wanted to share that caveat, I think in general it makes sense, but it's only when Labor Day is late. That you may find schools and districts that it bumps into that third week. But you 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 know, again, certainly as we've done before, if there's something we can work around, we can. I think it's also a great way to, as as the folks from Adventist are here. As we think about the ongoing bills about schools, when schools can start and school calendar. This is also another compelling reason to give support to that. And it it was headed there last year, I think our Hampton Roads delegation, it was very close, Joanna reminds us. And I think this is a way to also perhaps leverage this piece with the school start time. Because for the next couple of years, again, the third Labor Day is late once in twenty twenty. And so twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, Labor Day runs late. And because of that, the it closes the school year will be closer to that third Tuesday, so.
So Dr. Boone, are, would it be your recommendation um to be supportive of this legislation based on the operations of the school?
Yes.
For school, yes, okay, Ms. Martin?
No, I was just thinking about this, school starts times and also that we do have summer programming. So I I guess it would just, like we do with a lot of the schools, just partial off the program. The programming and then have the um a designated area for the elections.
Actually, it wouldn't necessarily impact summer school. Because there's usually about a week or so break between the end of the school year and the start of summer school. And so I that that won't be as much of an issue, it's just that that third Tuesday is gonna run into the close of the school year. But again, because we look at the calendar in advance, we can look at it in our internal. Based on the information that Ms. Isles has presented, we can look at it in our internal setting. And then be able to, as we do our calendar projections out for the next couple of years, to consider that.
Are there any board members that have an objection or a concern raised about uh them moving forward? With pursuing this uh legislation?
I I just have one comment, I I'm all in favor of it, especially since it impacts Norfolk and where we are. But I understand other parts of the state, they start school earlier, before Labor Day. So um I don't know how their schedules, so it could be something great for us, but another part of the state may be.
It doesn't impact them.
Really against it.
They get out early. The King's Dominion laws, we refer to it. Where we start after Labor Day.
We were just having that discussion today at the Regional Superintendent's Meeting, but that that's, that's the whole piece of where I think. Again, we could use this in terms of leverage toward that um school cal, school start of the year. And perhaps leverage those two together because everybody wants somebody to come out and vote. And so elected officials can 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 now connect that to something else.
So Madam Chair, may I ask, so what would you need exactly from our board?
If you all are in support of the measure, if you could, if you'd be willing to draft a letter um to Delegate Steve Landis. Or you can send it to me and I'll forward it to him and every member on House and Senate peony. Who are the ones that initially start with the legislation so that they could review it. But we're looking for support from our local school boards.
So Madam Chair, would I make, I'd like to make the recommendation, then we draft up a letter so the board members can review it. And then we add it to our consent agenda on the formal, is that okay if we?
Yeah, and I would support that and also um we can add it to our general legislative priorities as well. And may even want to, if we wanted, how strong, we could actually do a resolution.
When we draft the letter, we'll do a compliment resolution? All right, we have a task. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. So you guys don't get the summer off at all, right?
No, we don't work once every four years like everybody thinks.
Yeah, by the way, deadline to register is October fifteenth.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, um Mr. Clayton, Ms. uh Ms. Martin, I'll let you go ahead and uh discuss. And uh our topics for our legislative uh matters. Let me, let me just begin by saying, we have several committees within the board. Um one of those committees is the Legislative Committee and um with Dr. Boone, there is uh Dr. Birdsong. And am I leaving anyone else from Administration with on the Legislative? So and then Ms. Martin and Mr. Clayton are our board representatives for this. So I would like to open the floor to them to lead off our discussion and then to introduce um the guests that we have with us today.
All right, we're tag team, so I I'll lead off by um saying that we're really excited, uh Ms. Martin and myself. To be working on with the Legislative Committee and def, definitely to be working with Ron and Joanna. And we've gotten a proposal here today and definitely what we've been talking about so far. Is trying to get, whether or not we're gonna have a combined legislative, Bring Your Legislator to School Day along with our Legislative Breakfast. But I think that we've got a general consensus that we're gonna try it this year with a combination of the two. Um and that we've asked uh Delegate Jay Jones if he would kinda be our champion to work with the other, getting legislators together in the area. Um so with that, um I'll turn it over if Ms. Martin has anything else, if not, we'll go with the.
Well, I just wanna update, um two weeks ago, I went to the um VB. They are Legislative and Advocacy Conference and uh Mr. Jordan was there as well. And um he actually moderated a session, a panel. And some, just wanna share some of the topics that we discussed that day. Um number one was school safety, um school modernization, uh tax conformity and the school calendar. So those are the areas that we're looking at and I'm just met on Jana, is that correct?
Jana, yes.
So um I look forward to working with our um with our consultants.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, and so in the years passed, um we've worked with Adventist Strategies to formulate a list of priorities. That the board uh comes around, um items that we support, items that we would recommend against. And uh last year, we tried to take some some bold steps in proposing um some new legislation. As it relates to a J-Lark study for the true impact of what educational needs are, especially in. Areas such as Norfolk Public Schools, that is the largest urban school division in the state. Um and so they have helped us formulate these priorities. And um we heard very clearly from the delegates um last year that they are looking more for actual legislation. Um to come from us and we're happy to step up and deliver that uh because we wanna be advocates for our kids. Each and every day, so um thank you for being here, for traveling to be here with us and I'll let you go ahead and start with your presentation.
Okay, um thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Boone, members of the committee. Actually, not a committee, your board. We just, we were, um we we appreciate the opportunity to um.
Just hold it. Hold it, just hold it for a bit.
I'm from New Jersey, I kinda have a big mouth, so. So we um we appreciate the opportunity to come and just tell you guys a little bit about ourselves and and what we do. It's um our company is actually, we're celebrating our twenty-year anniversary um this year. So um we do, we do a lot of different um business consulting things. But we um, we also do association management and lobbying. And the lobbying part, the advocacy is is what we do for you. And you'll um, you'll see as we go, um I'm not gonna read you the slides. Because I I have great faith in you that you can read them yourself. But um we use a team approach at Adventist and um and we are your team. So um we, we have built policy knowledge and networks and we. Oh, we got the slide back.
Okay. I'm having. Technologically challenged, but there we go.
Our networks from um from years of working in uh state government and and as lobbying. For um for schools especially, um we build a a very large network. Of um other legislative liaisons with other school districts, uh V S B A, um VAS. We um, we also um meet regularly with with other school divisions, legislative liaison. So we can build coalitions and that kinda thing, so um. We um, this is our our third year going into our third session with Norfolk. And um and we've had a lot of issues. We've asked Dr. Boone to come down to Richmond and um and testify a few times. And um it's uh, we had um, we we actually had uh some some interesting things come up. Last year that I think we solved, but I'll let Ron talk more about that. I've been working at Adventist for eight years, so um three of them with with you guys. And I've been um with the General Assembly Committee Meetings and Subcommittee's and I'm familiar with all that. The most important committees are Senate Ed and Health, House Education and all of their Subcommittee's. And um Dr. Gabriel, you know that um you can reach me anytime, text me or come down and see us. We um, we would love to be able to sit with you and and talk with you some more and take you to to visit our legislators.
And the the other thing, if I'll just jump in real quick is um when the General Assembly gets started. And then when they go into Subcommittee Hearings, they will call us and ask us to come. And as they've called on Dr. Boone several times before, if we're available. We will go up to Richmond and speak on behalf of a bill or on behalf of Norfolk Public Schools. And it really does make a huge difference um when you are there speaking because they'll ask you questions. And it uh it really um shows how important it is for our school division. And sometimes those meetings will come with a couple of days' notice, so it's working on that part.
Some, sometimes it's even shorter than that, um it, the General Assembly session moves at an incredible pace. And we work for like twelve-hour days for a couple of months. And um and they they don't close for for snow, they expect you to put your boots on and trudge up the hill. So um so it's it's really exciting, but it's also challenging because of the close time constraints on things. So we appreciate the help that you guys give us when um when we need you to come testify. And we we often just do it, where your your feet on the ground and your eyes and ears there. And we also do um weekly reports that Ron will go into.
Yeah, let me talk, let's kinda set the PowerPoint aside a minute. You all have read it, you can read it at your leisure and talk about um, talk about ourselves. As Jana said, she's been working with the General Assembly for about eight years now. I've been doing it for often on twenty-nine years, uh doesn't mean I'm old, just means I'm experienced. The uh and most, I'm a cre, I'm a creature of state and local government. Fourteen of those years were at the House Appropriations Committee where I uh learned how the black box known as the. State Public Education Funding Formula works. That little did I know how much I would put that knowledge to to use later in my career than I did at that time. I had a really good teacher, uh our principal analyst on that was a former math teacher named Carolyn Ridgeway Cook. From uh who, she was originally from Halifax. But um and being a good math teacher, she made me a, she made, turned me into a good pupil, uh so I learned that well. Let's move forward a little bit and talk about some of the things that the General Assembly does and how they how they deal with public education. Everybody in the General Assembly has their fingers in the in the K-12 world. There are nine committees or Subcommittee's that that touch elements of K-12. There are the Education Committee in the House and it has two Subcommittee's that touch K-12. There's a s, uh Education and Health Committee in the Senate, they have a Subcommittee that deals with public ed. There's the Appropriations Committee, which is the money committee, they have two, two. They have an Elementary and Secondary Education Subcommittee, they have a Compensation and Retirement Subcommittee. You think, well, comp and retirement, retirement benefits for teachers, big, big deal. On the Senate Finance Side, similar, they have a a Subcommittee that deals with, they, there's the general government that deals with compensation and retirement. And they have an Education Committee that deals with both higher education and K-12. So you see uh the number of the folks there who have their fingers involved. The General Assembly considered last year um hundreds of bills dealing with public education. Public education is second on, the Education Committees handled, the in terms of number of bills handled. Are second only to the Courts of Justice Committees in terms of number of bills handled. You may have noticed in the, I hope you were received electronically a a sample of the bill tracking list that we use. That was thirty-five pages, that's a list, list thirty-five pages, that's, those were all K-12 bills that touched K-12. So that gives you some idea of the types of of things. And things move very, as Jana indicated, very quickly. One of the things, one of the challenges for us has been that the Norfolk area is not well represented on the co, on the committees that touch K-12. Uh we have no one on the House Education Committee, we have one member on the uh Senate Education Committee, that's Delegate Lewis. We have uh one uh, one one member on the House Appropriations Committee and he has a part of Norfolk Nets, Delegate Stolly. And we have one member on the Senate Finance Committee who touches a piece of Norfolk, that's Senator Wagner, that's it. So it's incumbent upon us to build and have relationships with the other members who are not from Norfolk. In order to carry our, carry our water and get our message across. Couple of things that it by way of example last year and then I'm use this as kind of a segue into what we're looking at going forward. School discipline, big issue last year. There are a number of folks who wanted to remove the, a lot of the discretion that you as a board had for dealing with school disciplinary issues. We banded together with um our colleagues from other divisions around the state. And worked the General Assembly very hard in not beating it back, but making it more reasonable, accomplishing the goals of the of the proponent. the goals of the, of the proponents, who pointed out quite correctly that discipline in many school divisions is meted out on a very disparate basis. And that, so we, but we came up with something that when we walked away from the table, everyone felt like, okay, this is fair, we can, this will work, and let's see how we go. That didn't come easily. The other, another issue was in the Board's Packet last year, dealt with teacher, the teacher shortage. This year, everybody focused, last, this past year, everybody focused on teacher licensing issues and how we can reduce some of the barriers to entry into the profession, so we worked very hard with those.
Well, that and also reciprocal.
And reciprocal agreements, which was particularly important for this area.
Reciprocal agreements, which are very important to Norfolk. And that'll allow your military spouses who come and they're licensed in other states, they can also apply here instead of going through the, you know, jumping through a million hoops.
Success in the General Assembly is generally accomplished through building coalitions. And we have a group of, we call them the Virginia Educational Liaisons, which is a group of all the public ed advocates who represent school divisions around the state. We meet once a month during the session. But more importantly, there's a smaller group, as there usually is, that meets every Friday over lunch during the General Assembly session. It's the representatives from V S B A, from VAS, from Fairfax, Loudon, and Prince William, Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach. We sit around, tight table, lunch at Stacy's office. Stacy is the contract lobbyist for V S B A. And we talk about, okay, what's coming up this week, who's going to, what's going to be, and what's going to be our strategy, how we want to attack this, who's going to talk to who, who's the key person? And those, the folks around that table tend to drive a lot of the effort that's done at the General Assembly, because we represent the places with the most votes and the large, and the largest number of, largest enrollments. And, and that's an important part of this, and that's another thing we bring to the table. Looking forward, I think there are several issues that we need to be, get on our horse and get ready for this year. One is, just so you know, the General Assembly's still in session, twice. They're in Special Session One for Judges. They've been in Special Session One since late spring. They've got judges they've got to have not elected yet, and they've also got elected Judge to the State Corporation Commission. Another unfinished business, they're in, they're also in Special Session Two. So, they're in two sessions simultaneously, they're both in recess right now. And Special Session Two deals with the redistricting of the 11 districts that the federal courts have ruled are disproportionately packed with minority voters. So, that's going on. In addition, the General Assembly, the governor reported at the end of the fiscal year, now we're getting to my sweet spot, is money, that there was a budget, a general fund balance, so about $650 million. That's a lot of dough, folks. Most of that is directly attributable to the impact of federal tax reform. Now, that 600, and about 50, 550 million of it was attributable to that. The General Assembly has already earmarked that, it's, that's not new money, it's going to go, and nothing's going to, it's going to reserve. The general, the state's been hit pretty hard by the rating agencies in terms of drawing upon the rainy day fund, two out of the, twice out of the last four years when there was a revenue shortfall at year-end, rather than cut local aid, they dipped into the rainy day fund. General Fund revenues were still growing, but not at the rate we projected, so it wound up in a shortfall. The bond rating agencies have said, that's not, that's not, the rain's not falling when that happens, so you shouldn't be dipping in your rainy day fund. You should have another reserve for that. So, a lot of this year-end balance is going into that additional reserve. In addition, the General Assembly funded, in the second year of the biennium, pay raise for teachers and state employees, so we've got that. It's probably not enough, and as you all will know, or some of you know, and some of you will learn, when the state gives you a pay raise, it's going to cost you money. Because it's only for instructional staff, it's only for SOQ instructional staff. So, all those instructional staff above the SOQ is 100% on, on the city's dime, all your support staff are on the city's dime. So, you could get $4 million from the state for a, say, pay raise, and it costs you $24 million in local dollars. So, that, so always beware of the state when it comes to education funding. So, that, that, so getting back to the budget, though, going forward, the General Assembly, the majority of the General Assembly, the majority party has indicated they want to do tax reform. They feel that the federal tax impact, the federal tax law changes were designed to benefit the middle-income taxpayer, and that by the state retaining that money, it's in effect a tax increase on middle-income taxpayers. So, they've indicated they want to return that money to taxpayers in form of tax reform. Tax reform, once on the table, can be a very wide-ranging thing. And I'll give them credit, they did, decided not to deal with it in a special session and deal with it in the context of the regular session in January, but tax reform's going to dominate the session in January. We have been working with each of the, we, is, just, we'll put it out, we, we also represent two other school divisions. We have been working with those school divisions as well as our friends at V S B A, we were at the conference, too. We didn't know what you looked like.
I looked at the picture, but I couldn't find you.
But, and our friends at V S B A and VAS, and some of the others, we're all around the table. The issue for us that we need to put on the table, and we touched on it last year, is the state is not upholding its end of K-12 funding. It's designed to be a partnership with overall the state paying 55% of the SOQ cost and the localities paying 45% on a statewide basis, and then you adjust it for the composite index for each individual local government. State's not doing that, they're doing a number of things to depress that number. First, the standards of quality are artificial. Virtually every school division in the state exceeds those standards of quality. Everybody's got a lower pupil teacher ratio, everybody's got more counselors, everything, most all school divisions exceed those standards. Two years ago, the, in 2016, the State Board of Education proposed changing this, a number of those standards to make them reflect, more reflective of what's actually in practice in, in the school divisions. The State Board can adopt the SOQs, but they really don't go into effect unless they're reflected in state law. Title 22.1 of the state code contains the SOQ. You can go in and read them, most people don't realize they're there, too. But, and the General Assembly did not adopt them because it didn't want to pay for them. It would have cost several hundred million dollars in new funding, they didn't want to pay for them. So, the standards, so the SOQ is deliberately kept, that's one issue. So, they're not paying the true cost of education. The next issue that, and we, again, we dealt with this, and so last year, in our package, was a request that the Joint Legislative Audit and Commission, Review Commission, look at the true cost of public education, whether or not the state's meeting its mandate for that. The second item, and so we've been, we've been, we've been doing mission work, we've been, that message is resonating with a number of people, and we're seeing some coalitions coming together to start working on, to join us on that this year. Secondly, the lottery funding. When, those of you who voted in the, when, for the constitutional amendment to dedicate lottery funding to education, like most of us assumed that that would mean all new money for public education. What really happened is they, they used the lottery funding to supplant general funds. And so they plugged it into funding that had, previously had general funds for textbooks and a bunch of other things. The, prior to the recession, the General Assembly had started to take some steps to remedy that a little bit, and had, prior to the recession, they'd reached the point where 40% of the lottery funds were being returned to the local school divisions directly on a per-pupil basis, not going through the LCI. So, it was good money, real money, based on, pretty much based on your enrollment. Recession came, it went away. After the recession, the General Assembly's gradually been getting back to the 40% in this biennium, it's the 40, they're back to the 40%. And they've done, actually gone a little bit further, and there are no restrictions on usage of that 40%, you can use it for anything you want. And, and they'll, they'll very, and they will point this out, we'll hear this, if we talk, when we talk about school construction or school maintenance, where you're getting the lottery money, you can use that for it, you can use it for anything you want. But it, but that belies the fact that we should be getting all of lottery money, the 100% should be returned in that manner for the school divisions to use. And so, one of the things we had in the, we had a piece in the legislative package last year to address this, and we will talk about that some more in the upcoming year. The next item would be, and on that would be support staff, and Dr. Boone really knows this, at the recession, during, at the beginning, prior to the recession, the General Assembly essentially paid its share of the SOQ support staff that you had, no matter how many, they paid for what you had, for the prevailing practice and the prevailing cost. Governor Kane, at that time, proposed capping it as a budget-saving measure during the, during the recession. According, that cost school divisions about $750 million. Our friend and neighbor, Dr. Jim Roberts, next door in Chesapeake, railed about that to no end, and will to his grave, by the way, y'all know he retired, but he will to his grave. And, and every year has made that a big issue. But that is another example of the state, they refusing to put that, to lift that cap and costing the school divisions money and not recognizing the true cost of public education. And the last issue on that is, is school replacement, maintenance replacement and reconstruction. That's an issue that the state has not participated in since the early 50s. You've probably read some of the articles in the paper about the history of that, when the, a lot of the schools were built during the 50s with state assistance. The special subcommittee that's led by Senator Stanley, it's a Subcommittee of the Senate Local Government Committee, was down last week, we, I think it was last week, one of the days run together.
Thursday.
We were at Booker T. Washington in the evening, and over at Maury the next day. And they saw, and, and that's not unique to us, that's, but we need the state to step up in that regard, too. So, the, overall, we paint a picture, the state's not doing its piece, and we're, and we're building a coalition on this, and whether or not this is the year where the dam actually breaks, we'll see. But the, but the other thing to keep in mind is, is you all really know up close, it's about elections. We have elections, we have a big election coming up in 2019, the entire General Assembly's up for reelection, House and Senate both. And with the House under control of the majority party by one, one vote, and the Senate, and pretty much by two votes, well, in effect, one vote, 21-19, there's going to be a lot of play for positioning in the election to retain or take control of either house. So, those are the kind of things, some of the things we see going forward. In addition, school safety, as was alluded to earlier, is going to be a huge issue. The Speaker created a Special Committee on School Safety, they avoided the issue of guns, you can debate whether that was a good or bad idea, but I think the reality is, and I've known the Speaker a long time, he's a, he's a teacher, he was a former teacher in, government teacher in, in Chesterfield County. And I, I truly think he believed that if we started talking about guns and the school safety, his, his group, it would suck all the air out of the room. But it allowed him to focus on a lot of other things, and so one of their principal recommendations is to increase funding, state funding for mental health or for counselors in school, in school divisions. So, I think we're going to see a big push on, on certain aspects of support staff that deal with mental health, and so we'll want to work with that this, this year. Those were, are some of the things we'll see, and in talking to Mr. Clanton, and as he alluded to earlier, we're going to go ahead and, if you all are amenable, and pull, pull together a draft of the legislative package, working on, working from last year, as we'll mark that up, we'll build in some of the new things, and then let the Legislative Committee circulate it among you all for additions or deletions and things like that, which is, I think is consistent with what was done in the past. And we'll go from there. We're really looking forward to working with you all to getting to know the new faces, each of you, the new faces better. And when you come to Richmond, whether you do it on V S B A Day, or you decide that I can't make, I don't want to get in, lost in the crowd that day, because there will be a lot of people there. And the Pocahontas Building, it's not, since the General Assembly Building is gone, it's just a big hole in the ground now, the Pocahontas Building is a converted bank building, and it's a really kind of tight in there. So, you'll, you'll get a flavor for how just up close and personal the General Assembly can be. And right on down to one set of elevators serve the east end of the building, and another set of elevators serve to the west, and it all don't go to the same floors. So, but when you do that, we'll be with you, we'll help you set, set up your meetings, and we'll have you prepared for those discussions. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
For a timeline, for us, for the legislative priorities or legislation, what type of timeline would we be looking?
We'll get them to you in draft form, trying to be realistic rather than ambitious, middle of next week.
Okay. And then we would need to have them back to you by when?
The, the goal is to have your work done, let's start, the goal is to have everything settled by the time you meet with the delegation. Now, you don't have to have a formal resolution approving them by then, if you're not, you know, you can keep them in tentative form and based on feedback from the delegation, tweak them some, some, some school divisions do that, and then finalize them afterwards. I mean, you can finalize them up until January. But, but if, we need it packed down fairly substantially prior to meeting with the delegation so we know we want to talk to them about, and then if we're going to ask them to develop legislation, their deadlines are very arbitrary. The deadlines for requesting drafting of legislation for pre-filing will be right after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So, it'll start quick. And then, just so you know, House members, there's no limit on how many bills they can pre-file, but when, when the first day of the session starts, there's an absolute cap on how many bills they can file in the House.
All right. Ms. Posey? I just have a quick question. I wonder, I know, I looked at the bill tracker, and I wonder if you're hearing any talk, and you know, for the last couple of years, we've had socioeconomic diversity as a, as one of our legislative priorities. And I know there's a, there's a lot of priorities around that, but now I know at the national level, there's a push to, to put the, the, what's it, the Strong Diversity Act back on the, the table. So, is that something you think, or hearing about?
No, I haven't, we, we haven't heard anything about it at the state level.
No, but the impetus for the, a lot of the, the school discipline changes are coming because of that. And, and so it has an impact on other things, and it's definitely at the forefront of people's minds.
Yeah, it's a good point. It's manifesting itself in a lot of different ways, whether it's trying to find appropriate staff for hard-to-staff schools, it's just.
Right, we're putting, we're putting bills forward that essentially cater to the bandage, yeah, to the symptom and not really getting at the root, so, you know, that's.
All right, well, thank you very much for being with us tonight and for bringing us that update. We will be in close contact through our Board Member Committee reps on those priorities and on the development of the Take Your Legislator to School Day item. Thank you, safe travels back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our meeting for, actually, one other topic that was brought to my attention.
Yeah, definitely. So, Madam Chair, I just want to take a point of personal privilege here. At the next work session that we have, I will be sending out to everybody the Delegate Stanley Handbook that has all the legislative positions and items for which, when we go to V S B A's conference next month, that I'm serving as the voting delegate for our delegation there. I just want to make sure that we have a brief discussion about it, that everyone gets it ahead of time. I do want to bring up the point, and I want to offer the professional courtesy to Mr. Jordan in regards to his nomination. We were, we did see it in the newsletter last week for V S B A President, which is a big thing, and everyone knows that I used to serve as the V S B A Politeerian, so my thing is I'd just like to make sure things are done decent and in order, and that they follow the protocol. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Jordan, not now, but that we have some time, just before we come to our next work, for our next meeting in there, when we talk about V S B A, particularly with the section, Article Four, Section Two of Officers and Elections for V S B A, it states that there has to be a written nomination, and it has to be voted on by the Board, and I'm not quite sure that we've done that, and I want to make sure that his nomination doesn't have any questions, and that we've gone through the proper protocol, and that we've had the discussion, we've had a vote on that. But if he says that's happened already, that we already have that information. So, I'm going to open those lines of communication and for us to talk about that before we get to it, and just to make sure that we have done that. And before we get there, because as the voting delegate, I want to make sure that I'm voting and make sure that we've done it. So, that's the only personal privilege I have.
Okay.
May I speak to that? So, just, just for clarification, I've been nominated, or will be, part of the nominating committee's report, recommended as V S B A President-elect. So, that would mean that I would not be President in the coming year, I would be President if everything continues and I choose to serve and the Delegate Assembly approves to, um, serve in the subsequent year. Um, Mr. Clanton did bring these issues to me, I think he may have brought it to others previously. I just want to, uh, clarify that, um, as I was being asked to consider the position by members of the V SBA, uh, membership, um, I followed the protocols as I understood them to be. Uh, if there are any questions about it, I'd be glad to address any questions. Um, I think this is, just so, those of you that may not know, um, I think it was in 2013 when you were still a staff member here, and you helped to have Norfolk host the, uh, Todd Water Region Meeting. And at that time, uh, Norfolk Public Schools was not very much engaged with V SBA at all. Uh, Superintendent at the time thought it was important that, um, Norfolk Public Schools have a presence in V SBA, and I, uh, got voluntold and served as Vice Chair of the Region, Chair of the Region, uh, Member of the Board, and currently the Finance Committee Chair, uh, being nominated for, uh, President-elect, uh, co-chaired a task force on schools in challenging environments. Many of the legislative issues that we brought forward have been a result of, um, of that work, and I think Norfolk has benefited, uh, from having, uh, strong participation with V SBA in terms of helping to advance our legislative agenda as, uh, as we just heard. I just also wanna say that, um, you know, whether it's that position, or serving on the school board, appointed, elected, housing authority, um, opportunity workforce board, you know, all of that has really been about, um, service. Uh, it's not something where I was looking for glory. Uh, people asked if I would consider something, and, uh, and as part of my commitment to a better city and a better country, I've done that. So I'd ju- would like to share just one little piece, and then I'll end. Um, uh, I do come from a immediate and extended family that has, uh, done a lot in terms of service to a better community. Um, you know, one, uh, you know, many of you all know, my uncle Joseph served on the City Council here and helped to abolish Norfolk's poll tax that provides us to have this diverse electorate that we have today and representation on the school board. Uh, when I was twenty-four, he wrote my brother and me a, a letter, uh, dated September twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty-nine, and one of the things he wrote, "Quietly but constantly, I express my thanks that God gave to me, parents, who are fully clothed with the understanding of who we are and why we are here. North American and African slavery notwithstanding, we are the beneficiaries of immensely proud African heritage, and our duty bound to do all we can to help enhance that heritage, not merely for our good, but for the good of all mankind." And so my service here, my service with V SBA, my service anywhere, is about duty for the benefit of the good of all mankind, and if it's the will of this Board to support that effort, um, I appreciate it, uh, but I'd be more than happy to discuss that and any other thing related to my community service, um, as a Board Member or in any other capacity, uh, as a proud citizen of the United States of America. Thank you.
And Madam Board Chair, I'd, I'd like to thank Mr. Jordan for that. However, I just wanted to make sure that it's done in proper protocol, and that we address it, and so that if, uh, he does go forward, uh, and he's representative, that there's no question about it, and we've done what we're supposed to. That's all.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, that being said, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session, and I thank everyone for the extended time that you've given us, Dr. Boone and Steph. Go ahead, sorry. Uh, for, um, allowing us to go over in our meeting, uh, today, um, I sincerely appreciate it. Um, can I have a, a motion on the floor to enter into closed session?
Madam Chair, before we do, I, and I may, um, you know, bring a privilege as well to add, could we have a, discuss some matters of the Board before?
Before going into?
Closed session.
Okay, as, yes, we can.
Um, I, you know, we've had, I'm glad to hear that we're gonna have the Accountability Plan on, uh, discussion next month, but I, I just wanted to have the opportunity to talk about, you know, next steps and of things that have come up, um, questions that have been asked that, um, you know, that if we could have a discussion on, um, trying to, to get some answers around them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we've talked about Accountability Plan, goals and priorities, and look forward to, to that. I know the ed planning is also, uh, going forward, as we've seen. Um, but I, the, the ed planning discussions have raised, um, uh, some questions, because I know we were, I thought, anyway, we're gonna have a CTE update, um, I think in August was kinda the projected timeline, and Dr. Boone, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, I know things change, but it seems that, uh, the process, you know, the steps in place for informing the full Board, especially with new Board Members, about what the, uh, you know, what has gone on around our CTE, Comprehensive CTE High School, um, and also making sure that everyone is informed before we enter these community dialogues, I think is extremely important, because the community, obviously, you probably have already received some questions from the community, and I know, um, you know, I've heard some misinformation, and I just think that, right now, there's so many different things that I've been hearing out in the community, that I think that update also along with, has to be, uh, provided, um, very soon. Um, so if you, I don't know if you have a answer for when we might?
Not, not yet at this point, but certainly, um, taking your thought into consideration. There are ongoing discussions about that, and, um, we certainly do wanna keep everyone informed, um, and we have, uh, we have a, a meeting of a smaller group of folks coming up, uh, shortly, and I'm very, uh, I can definitely get back with you, um, on when we can put that back on the agenda for everyone. And I can understand the need, um, for not just the Board Members, but for the community to hear the update on where we are with that.
Yeah, uh, 'cause I, I worry about, uh, the level of misinformation that is spurring out there, that, um...
Sure.
That we need to, we need to address it, yeah, take hold of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we've had questions come up about how, how items are being placed on the agenda, and how they're being cha- you know, changed, and by who. And, you know, I'd like for us to have some discussion around that and get some answers on that.
Okay.
And also, um, you know, we've, uh, learned that you and Mr. Clanton have been having, uh, meetings with City Council, and I was wondering if we could get an update on the nature of those meetings and, um, you know, what information has been shared, so that we're all informed of those discussions.
Sure. Um, Mr. Clanton and I have, uh, worked very closely in trying to build our relationship with City Council. Um, they are our funding arm, um, as we just heard, almost forty-five percent of our funds are coming from, um, our local, uh, city government, and they have, as the state has come down with their funding, they have tried to step up to, uh, help us, um, not as much as we would like, uh, but they are trying. And in, um, working with them and in meeting with them, it's just basically to, um, allow us to just establish a relationship with them, um, on behalf of the Board. And it was really us just, um, trying to kinda set the stage possibly for our joint meeting, which we're still trying to work on a date with them. Um, but, uh, we thought of five basic questions to kind of catapult our discussion. What things do you, um, like about NPS? What things do you think we can improve on? Um, do you feel like you're getting positive news about the division? And, uh, are there any budget, uh, priorities that you have that you're thinking about? Just to see where they are. And it's all about the joint expectations that we have. We have expectations, um, that we left with from our last joint meeting, and it was, you know, where do you see public education? Where do you value it? And we need to hear from them as to where it is on their priority, you know, they have priorities of public safety, of construction, and of other items. We need to hear from them where they see education, since it's the biggest part of their, uh, budget. And, um, we've only had two meetings so far, and, uh, we're in the process of having the other ones. So that's, that's where we are with them.
Madam Chair, if I could add, um, this was done in the spirit of our Accountability Plan as we see it, um, which is actually Goal Three, Community and Parent Engagement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it talks about increased Board engagement with local, regional, and state and federal elected and appointed officials. So we went with that, um, as a joint.
Right, and to be clear, I am not questioning at all the, you know, we should all be encouraged to engage with our local officials. Um, I just think that what is relayed, you know, is what we've agreed to on behalf of the Board. Um, since you are, you know, the leader of this Board, I think that the, the conversation should be in alignment with what we believe they need to know. And from looking at some of the questions, I feel that we, you know, you know, I'm glad you referenced the Accountability Plan, because I think if we had discussed the Accountability Plan prior to and really, you know, delved into it, we, we could've, uh, you know, come up with some of what our priorities are, what our goals are, and been able to share that. So I feel it was a little bit premature to go in with that.
Well, it's just the beginning conversations, we're gonna be having several...
I just, I just worry about setting commitments or, or expecting, uh, making a commitment to them, and also setting the tone that, um, I'm trying to think of a better way to say this, but that they're governing the division, you know, so...
Yeah.
So, you know, um, because we have had that...
They've been very well received, they've been really excited to, to sit down and talk with us, and they, and we've had a lot of great feedbacks, just from the two.
And like I said, I think we should be encouraged to do it, that's not, that's not the point. The point is, you know, that we're on the same page about what it is we are communicating.
NF, NFMA, when we talk about the Accountability Plan, I, I explicitly remember Dr. Boone expressing to us that we were, this would be the year that we would look at the Accountability Plan. Um, we are now...
No, Strategic Plan.
That we're not gonna talk about the Accountability?
We, we are, yes.
Different things, two different things.
We're not gonna go down that...
But, but we're gonna touch the Accountability Plan now, because we have to, because everything's changing as far as our, our targets and so forth. So we are now, and I think that our Chair has expressed that, um, and we've had conversations about, and we have agenda planning tomorrow, um, to really talk about, and taking from what Ms. Smith said, um, and the suggestion of taking a hunk of time and really delving into it, um, and getting this particular item done.
Special.
Um, but I can guarantee you, as far as from my perspective, um, looking directly at this, that the conversations are collegial in the respect of building a mutual respect between and listening. Um, we can't control what elected officials' opinions, thoughts, and what they may say, um, but when we meet with them, um, it's coming with, like, hey, we wanna build a relationship, how can we move forward? What is, and you've seen some of the questions, what are we doing well? What are some of the things that we could do better in communication? Um, and I begin, and think when you build relationships, um, especially when we come in, it's not just us handing over a budget, but that we've had time to build that relationship.
Mr. Jordan?
Just, just to comment on that, I know we were talking earlier about process and protocol, I just think what's important with this is, if you're there representing the Board, then the Board should have the opportunity to discuss with you what it is we would like for you to represent on behalf.
That's what I was gonna say.
And so I think what, what I, what caught me off guard was that these questions, and it, I think the question said, what was one thing, but that these questions were formed and these meetings were set up to advance something that the Board did not have an opportunity to discuss. So just as we were talking a moment ago about Take Your Legislator to School Day, the, the va- there's value in the entire Board being engaged in that process and us operating as a whole. Likewise, I think if you're gonna be representing certain positions on behalf of the Board, we just deserve the right to have some input into that, that's all.
Will of the Board, is that what we're, will of the Board?
No, I'm saying, we, we are operating...
When we're going out and discussing that, it's of the will of the Board.
No, I'm just...
That we had a general discussion together.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, is I would expect you to, all of us, to be out there doing engagement.
Get a consensus of the will of the Board and what we would go forward with.
If you copy this speech, I'll say what I'm saying. We have, we have not discussed yet what our Board priorities are, right? So in order for us to better articulate to, whether it's City Council, or to legislators, or to the public at whole, there's some value in the Board as a whole establishing what our goals are and what our priorities are. So then, when we go out, whether individually or collectively, we're all singing off the same sheet of music. I'm just simply saying, we didn't have the benefit of that discussion. So questions being formed and discussions being made, um, on behalf of the Board, doesn't have the benefit of the input of the full Board, that's all.
Thank you, and, um, as we...
I agree with that.
Thank you. And as we move forward with the rest of the meetings, we're definitely take that into consideration, but really, it's, it's a lot of listening right now. So, that being said, is there a...
Madam Chair, I move that we move into executive session?
Right, second, moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Butts?
Move the, the members of the school were going to a closed session for the purposes we've set out in subsection A of Section two point two dash three, seven, one, one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns the sharing between Board Members of confidential documents used in evaluating a specific employee. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion refers to consultation and briefing regarding the matter set out in subsection A and the advice of counsel concerning laws, policies, and regulations governing the sharing of information from executive sessions with the public. Ms. Bessine?
Can I make a point of clarification?
Hmm?
Um, are we, are we talking specifically, um, with your advice, Jack? I mean, I know we're going into closed session, but are we? I guess I'm confused about whether some of this is, could be open session discussion.
Well, the, uh, the discussion, the personnel section, uh, refers to the sharing of information of a specific employee, and that came about through a request from Mr. Jordan. And then the request for the general discussion of the law as it applies to, uh, to, to sharing of information in executive sessions came from Ms. Smith, and also, Mr. Jordan mentioned, uh, also mentioned something in relation to that.
Okay, so it requires, okay.
Yeah, just for clarity, my, my question was, um, share with a Board Member, wasn't with an employee?
He, he, yeah, I, I...
Correct.
Yes, I'm talking about Board Members sharing confidential, uh, personnel information of a particular employee of the school Board.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about what it...
Oh, okay, I got you.
All right, aye.
Ms. Campson? Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan? So you all know I've been reading these disclosures, I still have, um, contacted the Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council. So I just want you all to know that in this closed session, or any other closed session, or in general, if anything comes up related to, um, uh, Jordan versus NEF, I can't discuss it, and I can't be in a closed session about it. Um, and I'm to disclose that whereas before, I was part of three, now I'm just one, and so, um, I can't vote, can't, uh, discuss anything related to that, so I just want you all to know, if anything with that comes up, I'll have to, uh, remove myself and, uh, not participate in any discussion related to that. Uh, vote aye.
And it's not my intent to, uh, discuss anything to do.
Yeah, I just wanted my colleagues to know.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you, we're adjourned.